Please, Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez? Jimenez? Peralas?
Here.
Cohen? Roscoe?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Ms. Barza?
Here.
Arenas? Arenas? Foley?
Here.
Mahan?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Liccardo?
Present.
I see Jimenez is on.
Present.
Okay. I think I heard him, yes, just a minute ago. Okay, thank you, Tony. Please join me if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Lakshmi Subramanian, a vocalist with Eclipse Now, and Vice Mayor Jones will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Lakshmi Subramanian with Eclipse Nirvana. Her video includes a beautiful Hindu invocation that encourages peace, cooperation, and understanding. In her experience as a vocalist and student of world religions, she addresses the importance of engaging in mindfulness practices that promote hope and efficiency.
Om Sahana Vavatu Sahana Bhunaktu Sahaviram Karava Hahi Tejasvi Naavadhitamastum Avid Pishava Hahi Om Shanti 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 Namaste, Vice Mayor Jones and council members. What I just shared is a peace invocation from the Hindu tradition. The translation is as follows. May the divine protect us all. May we enjoy our session together and put forth our best efforts. May our work be brilliant. May there be no misunderstanding between us. Let there be peace outside and within. My name is Lakshmi, and it's an honor to be with you virtually. Today, more than ever, it is imperative for us to engage in mindfulness practices to help us stay hopeful and efficient during these unprecedented times. As a vocalist and lifelong student of world religions, I have always felt recharged when engaging in the intersection of music and religion. Sanskrit mantras of peace and positivity, like the one I just shared, can help us cultivate a healthy body, a resilient mind, and a compassionate heart. They serve as affirmations as we work together as a team in complete harmony and understanding toward common goals. I would like to conclude with a chant for global well-being, sending positive vibrations to all in the city of San Jose and beyond. Om Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaha Sarve Santuni Ramaya Sarve Bhadrani Pasyantu Maakashidukha Bhag Bhavit May all be happy. May all be healthy. May all enjoy prosperity. May none suffer. Thank you and best wishes for a wonderful meeting.
Thank you, Lakshmi. That was, uh, that was great. That was the last of our invocations for the month and around the theme of mindfulness. And hopefully, um, the videos have been helpful in terms of helping us manage through these very challenging times. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, appropriately. So I appreciate it, and Lakshmi, namaste, and thank you for, for your invocation. All right, so we're now on to orders of the day. Are there any changes to the printed agenda? I believe Councilmember Carrasco would like to speak and offer, uh, our meeting in memory of the many residents of our county who have perished in this pandemic. Councilmember Carrasco.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, first of all, I want to thank you and Councilwoman Arenas for bringing us together just last week to light up the rotunda in honor of the many that have lost their lives due to the pandemic. And today, we close the session in honor of those who, who have been victim to COVID-19. It's an unfortunate recognition that this pandemic has taken the lives of so many. We've known some of those that have been taken from us. We have seen through our different social media platforms. Every day, it's, uh, it's another individual lost to our community, or it's individuals who are sick and fighting for their lives. And so, of course, we want to make sure that we recognize them. Of course, this is an unfathomable milestone, a tragic milestone. We've now hit over 1,000 individuals who have been lost to the county of Santa Clara. And of course, San Jose being the largest city in the county, we have the most victims lost to COVID-19. Here in San Jose, we know we have had more than 60,000 cases. And our rate per 100,000 residents is almost twice that of the next largest rate in the county. My district in particular, as all of you know, has been hit the hardest, along with District 7. It encompasses 95127. And, um, and we have about 4,000 cases. That's the latest count, and it's always being updated with a rate of more than 6,000 per 100,000. Uh, others, if codes have reached alarming rates as well, 10,000 cases per 100,000 include 95116 and 95122. And a few other areas have surpassed more than 9,000 cases per 100,000 residents in the city of San Jose as well. We also know, and we've discussed this almost every other Tuesday, that our hardest-hit populations continue to be our most vulnerable working-class neighborhoods, residents who, of course, are our essential workers, working in industries that we need and people who need to make still a living, who can't get direct deposit or necessarily Zoom in order to make a living. So I'll, I'll close with this, which I think is important. We know that Governor Newsom just lifted the statewide stay-home order. And as we re-enter the purple tier, which allows us to dine outdoors, go get a haircut, do our nails, among some of those services that a lot of us have been looking forward to, I want us to all keep in mind in honor of those who have been lost to COVID-19. We still don't know a lot about COVID-19, the long-term effects, how insurances may view it. Is this a, a pre-existing condition? Is this going to impact our premiums? Are we going to live with, uh, complicated conditions that may appear later on in life? These are the lessons that we've learned. COVID is extremely contagious. It's deadly. It takes our loved ones very swiftly. It's particularly cruel to those who are most vulnerable. And in a study by UCSF, they found that among the most deadliest industries, agricultural workers and restaurant workers had a 40% chance greater of dying of COVID-19 than any other industry. And so, as we re-enter the economy, I ask all of our public and those who might be listening that we proceed with great caution that we continue to, uh, follow the CDC guidelines, even if the stay-at-home order has been lifted, that we, we continue with our lives, but we do so cautiously, knowing that other people are working and truly putting themselves at risk so that we can, uh, so we can have some sort of, uh, of a normal life. They, they are really very, very vulnerable. And, uh, we may not share the same kinds of risks that they are. And so I ask everybody, um, to, to be cautious and, uh, and be safe. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion on orders of the day?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye. All right, thank you, Councilmember Carrasco, for your words. Let's go on now to the closed session report. Nora, we had a pretty brief closed session.
We did not have closed sessions, so there is no report. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. To the consent calendar, now there's several items councilmembers would like to pull. So why don't we go straight to the pulled items and see if there are any others as well? I have, I have notes that Councilwoman Sparza liked to pull item 2.8, which is the appointment of members to the redistricting commission. She'd also like to pull 2.12, which is the amendment to rules of conduct resolution in the council appointments. She'd also like to pull item 2.13, which is a report on bids and award of contract on the Coyote Creek Trail. Councilmember Mahan liked to pull item 2.15, which is the exception to retirement plans, CAFR. And then Councilwoman Jimenez would like to pull item 2.19, which is approval of International Holocaust Remembrance Day. So why don't we do this? I know there, we'll start with the items that are being pulled, and then we'll, uh, we'll take all the other items in a, if there's a, uh, some, we can group those together to perhaps be more efficient in our vote. So let's start with item 2.8. The, are there any other items, let me ask? Councilmember Sparza, do you have any other items to pull?
No, Mayor, I actually, I was going to suggest, I don't know if there are members of the community for item 2.19, but I know we just did orders of the day, but if we want to take 2.19 first for the community, um, I'm okay with that. I just don't know if, if that's what you guys have planned.
I'll ask Councilmember Jimenez, did you, did you have plans for others to speak?
Given a few comments after my remarks.
Okay, why don't we take that out of order then? Councilman Jimenez, why don't you start us then with item 2.19, which is the approval of International Holocaust Remembrance Day so that we can ensure that a member of our community can be heard?
Thank you so much. As you mentioned, it is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Let me just start by thanking the organizations that made today as possible. I want to thank Jewish Federation of Silicon Valley and the Jewish Family Services of Silicon Valley. Holocaust, as we know, was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jews by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. January of this year marks 76 years since the liberation of Auschwitz, the largest concentration camp established by the Nazis. The camp was first liberated on January 27, 1945, Soviet forces. It is estimated that at a minimum, at a minimum, 1.3 million people were deported to Auschwitz between 1940 and 1945, and that at least 1.1 million people were murdered. In 2005, the United Nations declared January 27 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And since then, the city of San Jose and the city council has recognized this day ever since. Now, though the Jews were the primary victims of the Holocaust with over 6 million murdered, gypsies, people with disabilities, Jehovah's Witnesses, and members of the LGBTQ community were also targeted. Millions suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And the Holocaust was certainly undoubtedly an unprecedented tragedy. And today, we remember all genocides that have taken place across the world and demand an end to racial violence. In the suffering of the persecuted, we give honor to their memory and struggles, but we must also remember the impunity and the tyranny that allowed such a tragedy to happen. Never again can we be indifferent to the suffering of others, and we will always remember, and we will always fight back. Now, today, I have the great pleasure of introducing Tamara Brandman Notem. Tamara is one of 180 Santa Clara County residents who survived or escaped the Holocaust and now receives support through the nonprofit Jewish Family Services of Silicon Valley. She was forced to leave her beloved Black Sea birthplace with her parents at age 10 and experienced a harrowing journey to Siberia to flee the invasion of Hitler and his allies. Tamara is on the phone with us to share her inspirational story of survival.
Tamara, thank you for joining us and welcome. Thank you for sharing.
Give us, uh, she should. Hello?
Welcome. It's good to have you with us. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
I don't see you, but you see me. And I salute you, dear Sir Sergio and all staff of San Jose. I thank you very much for your devoted and compassionate participation in, in keeping memory of Holocaust survivors. I am the survivor. I am 90 years old, but I still feel in my heart the, the, the stress, misery, and horror of that time when I tried to escape Nazi, and I was successful with my family, came to Siberia. But returning back from Siberia to Odessa, my native city, I found all that my rest of relative, including my grandparents. The memory is terrible. As a Holocaust survivor, I pledge my promise to, to let my generation ahead of time to see how terrible to be in a war, to participate in that genocide. And then I want them to remember, we have to save our, our land, our country, our world from that terrible event, that it never, ever happened again. That's why I salute you, the San Jose City Hall, your devotion, your ability to keep the memory from the bottom of my heart. Thank you again to let me participate in the memory of my past. And I, I wish all future generations won't be, won't be meeting that horror. Thank you again, and all the happiness in the life that be with you in our dear San Jose. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Tamara. Thank you for sharing with us. Thank you for your courage and for your fortitude. Councilmember Jimenez, before we hear from other members of the community, is there anything else you would like to say?
I think that was, uh, it, I, I just want to, actually, this wasn't part of my, my script. But let me just say that a time where we have, uh, folks invading our nation's capital wearing shirts that say Camp Auschwitz, right, is really indicative of where we are in the present time in the state of our nation. And so, doing this, I think, is, is even more, uh, important. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that, that we, we as a country are really in a difficult state right now. And so I think doing these type of things is, is really elevated and called for at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any members of the, uh, the council like to speak on this item? Okay. Let me propose, we, let's take this item separately and vote to approve. Is there a motion, Councilmember?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
I see that two members of the community have just raised their hands. Let me just determine whether they wanted to speak on this item. We had hands down, and I want to check to make sure they, I didn't miss them. Dr. Wolf? Welcome.
Mayor Liccardo, who I know well, thank you very much, and city council members. I, um, can you hear me, by the way?
We can. We can hear you just fine. Thank you.
You, I, I'm so apologetic that this is the first, uh, one of these remembrance days that I've attended. And I particularly, it's really, uh, important today because my mother is watching. She's deaf, regrettably, but I, I went to Los Angeles yesterday to celebrate her 100th birthday. My mother and father were both in Auschwitz. And, and just wanted to comment that, uh, to the, to the speaker today, who, the city council member who, who introduced this. When my father was in Auschwitz, one of his jobs was to take people who had been in the crematorium and pull them out. I can tell you priests and nuns were constantly killed because of their religious belief. And, and I lost all four of my grandparents in Auschwitz. And, and the fact that my parents were alive really is quite a miracle, given that 250,000 Jews survived out of 6 million. And my mother would say today, as she did when she gave a, a talk to, um, the citizens of Rome, Italy, who had, uh, were, were honoring and regretting the fact that they had sent their Jews from Rome to Auschwitz. She would say, as, uh, in that speech she gave them, "Your freedom can be taken away just like that. You think it's there forever. It's not. Guard it with your life." And I, and I think, given what the, what the circumstances we see with the Capitol building in the last few days, it, it truly is so important that, that starting at a level here in the city council, working its way up through, through the, through the state legislature and into the Capitol, that we continue to work as, as hard as we all can to protect this gift that we have called freedom. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak on behalf of my mother, Sally, and my father, Elliot. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf. Thank you for sharing. Mr. Soto?
Good afternoon, Council. Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. This is, uh, I feel privileged. This is the second time that I've been in attendance for this remembrance. So thank you, Councilman Jimenez, for bringing this topic up and for Senora Tamara for, for sharing your story. What struck me about your story is the pain and the, the tyranny that you had experienced as a little girl, that it still resonates within your soul, within your spirit, still to this day. I understand that turmoil. I understand what it feels like to experience that, how it does not dissipate with time. It doesn't just go away. And as exemplified with what happened at the Capitol, the circumstances, the people, and the thought processes also do not go away. They are still endemic. I would, I would venture so far as to say that white supremacy and the virus and the sickness that it encompasses is still very much alive today and kills more people than COVID. I would venture so far as to say that. Now, we do have our own genocide here in California. Reading from the California Research Laboratory states, "From 1851 to 1859, the California Legislature passed 27 laws that the state comptroller relied upon in determining the total expenditures related to expeditions against Indians. The total amount of claims submitted to the state of California comptroller for these expeditions against the Indians was $1,293,000." What they were doing was they were cutting the heads. At the onset of California's history, they were cutting the heads off of Native Americans, and Peter Burnett was paying five bucks a head. They spent $1 million within an eight-year period at $5 a head. California has its own genocide.
All right, returning to the council, let's proceed then with the votes. Thank you, Tony.
I'm going to start over. Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye. Great. Thank you. Thank you, uh, to members of the community who participated, even those who did not speak. We appreciate you being with us. All right, let's now move on to item 2.8, which is the appointment of members to the redistricting commission. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, I wanted to pull this item because the limitations of the Brown Act prevented me from picking up the phone and calling you and having a conversation. And also, we have all made a commitment that we are about to vote on to, uh, to not communicate directly with the members of this commission, and I wanted to honor that. I, uh, I wanted to, to say that I have heard some comments about, uh, the chair of the commission talking to members of the community about what she thinks districts should look like. I, I do support, um, the work of this commission, but I'm concerned about somebody having, um, coming into the work with the commission with opinions about what districts should be. And I wanted to ask the city attorney, because I do want to honor the mayor's appointment. So I wanted to ask the city attorney if in approving the final language today, that we could add some language that members of the commission should not be expressing their opinions about changes to the districts during the process of hearing from the public. Can we add that change today so that we can honor the mayor's intentions and all of our intentions and who we've appointed?
Councilwoman Sparza, you mean until the conclusion of having heard from the public?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. The commission should base its decisions on the information that it receives in the process. And I'm, I'm sure, just as in every other redistricting, there will have a lot of conversations and study sessions, and the data will be presented. I, um, I, 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 you know, I mean, I think we've all worked really hard to make sure that we, we have open minds, and the people that we appoint have open minds. Um, and so, yeah, I'd like to add that, that language.
Okay. Nor, did you have any response?
Um, no, I think we can draft language to that effect. I, I think, uh, the only concern would be tying up the commission members in a, perhaps in a public meeting. So you're talking about outside of the public meetings, if I understand you. Is that correct?
I'm talking about in public, in private meetings, or in, uh, until, while they're still studying the data and the numbers, right? I think that usually the way this happens, the, the commission takes information, gets this latest census numbers, meets with community groups and other, um, other groups. Usually, the city attorney or council at some point says, "Here are all the rules, the federal rules about communities of interest or not diluting a population for votes" and all that kind of stuff. And then the commission comes down and makes some recommendations in a public setting and talks through that. And that's fine. That's what the process that I, you know, I think we all want to see happen, not have side conversations or have members join the committee with something specific in mind.
Oh, okay, and I, and I appreciate that, Councilmember. Thank you for that. I, I just, there wasn't a, you're not, you don't have a concern about questions being asked by the commission?
No, that's part of the process to me.
Yes, okay. Yeah, and that's, that's something we can, I'm sure, draft and, uh, add to that, the resolution if council wants to include something, include language to that effect.
So I, I would make a motion to approve the slate and the language with that amendment. To the language so that we can add that and again, honor the intentions of the council and, um, and the mayor and the council members for our appointments.
I'll second that motion. I, I do want to ask Councilwoman Sparza, though, just to probe a little further from where Norris left off. I would say I support the intent of the motion. I wouldn't want to handcuff the members of the commission from offering an opinion within the meeting during whatever context in which it may be appropriate to offer that opinion, feeling that they have to keep their mouth shut feeling that they have to keep their mouth shut until the very last meeting. I, I think I completely agree that we don't want commissioners out there expressing views in the public and, and in private and in other places until they've allowed the process to work its way through. But I would hate to think that we'd handcuff them from a fair exchange of ideas within the commission hearing that is publicly noticed.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. So, Nori, are you, at this point, clear about the, the motion?
Yes, and, and I think we can add that, probably to section four.
Okay, great. Any thoughts from the council? We'll go to the public. Mr. Bieghman?
Hi, happy end of January to everybody. There was a city charter commission meeting last night. The agenda for that meeting did not line up, and you could not use it Zoom to, to tune into the meeting. And that was very hurtful, I had to look, go into the master calendar and, and use that route. And so luckily, I had a backup plan. A lot of people may not have had that backup plan. Are you guys, you know, doing something to make this a more difficult process to be a part of for the public? There's also a question of, of, of language, and there was only, there was no Spanish or Vietnamese interpretation available. You know, I, I thought we were getting better at doing that, and that should be kind of commonplace and regular in our, in our lives and the meeting process and the Zoom process. So, you know, I hope you can work on these issues of accountability, inclusive, inclusivity, and all the good stuff, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Soto?
Good afternoon, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I really want to thank you, first of all, Mayor Licardo, for coming back to like the raised hands, because sometimes I'll get kicked off of Zoom. And so you have to repress the raised hand button, and sometimes I forget that. So, you've been very good and consistent about like rechecking that, so I just wanted to express my appreciation for that. With regard to this item, this is really like near and dear to me, because what we're talking about is redistricting the horseshoe. And we haven't, I, I keep coming back to this issue. We have not reconciled or reckoned or reconciled ourselves with the redlining and the restrictive covenants that created that area in the first place. I think it is irresponsible for us as a city to even come close to redistricting until we have established that the city is accountable for that. Number one, they're also accountable for the economic-
I'd like to order a pizza. Just kidding, hey Vivian, it's Rob from IC.
Could I please ask everyone to mute their mics?
No, I'd, I'd like some more time, no, that screwed up my train of thought. Oh, can?
Mr. Soto, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, can you, I need a minute twenty, that's part of, pretty much where I was at, can I get a minute twenty?
They're working on it now, go ahead.
Thank you, cool, that's cool, all right, perfect. Okay, so, we haven't reconciled ourselves with the redlining policies. So, the city, there's, there was social, economic, and political injustices that were created generationally, and we're still dealing with that today, just nobody wants to talk about it. I'm the only one, me, Esparza, Arenas, Carrasco, Prales, and Jimenez, we talk about it all the time. Because we, we have experienced the generational impact of those systems. And now we're talking about redistricting? I do not want to do anything with Willow Glen. They didn't want anything to do with us, they wanted nothing to do with the horseshoe, at all, absolutely nothing. Now, that is the most valuable piece of property in the world. I will go so venture, so far as to say, in the entire world. That is the most expensive piece of property right now. Back in the days, however, they didn't want nothing to do with the horseshoe, and we were fine with that. We rolled with that, we didn't just survive, we thrived. And that's why I'm here today, is to state that we have to have some kind of commission that number one, acknowledges what happened, number two, accepts the responsibility of alleviating the economic and social stratification that resulted from that segregation that was illegal, immoral, unethical, and against due process, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's vote then on item 2.8, which is the change to the resolution on the appointment of members of the redistricting commission.
Arenas?
Yes.
Paralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco? Carrasco?
Aye.
Thank you, Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Bulleye?
Aye.
Mayhem?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye. All right, thank you, round to 2.12, which is Amendment to Rules of Conduct Resolution and Council Appointments Standing Committees. Councilmember Sparza, you pulled this item?
Yes, I did, I'm happy to speak after my colleagues.
Okay, Councilmember Arenas? Councilmember Arenas, your, your device appears to be muted if you're trying to talk right now. If you're having a problem with the device, we can come back to you. I'll go to Councilmember Carrasco and then come right back to your devices.
Mayor, I, I don't know if Councilmember Arenas is going to come on, but I wanted to, before the council members can speak, I just wanted to disclose a violation of the Brown Act. I inadvertently violated the Brown Act when I spoke with you on the VTA assignments. And then we started to speak on the rules assignments. I, because we were speaking about two different things, I had, also had a conversation, although albeit brief, with Councilmember Esparza from District Seven about the, the, about the rules makeup as well. And so, I, I just wanted to make sure that I clear that up, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Arenas, we'll try your device again.
Yes, I'm so sorry, I'm, I was having some issues because I had a password change, so I apologize. IT was literally in the room trying to get me fixed up, so I apologize about that. As I switch devices, anyways, I will let that go. I, I wanted to just talk a little bit about what I see happening in, under this item, I know that it's under consent, and typically, it's not an item that we pick up to talk about, as it's an item that is just accepted. But last week, you know, I asked to adjust my, my assignments, and you all heard my reasoning. And so I think, you know, there's, there's, and, and I think there was another council member that did so as well. And so, one of the things that, that I'm noticing is that, that there is some natural changes, some organic changes that are happening in, in saying like, listen, this works, this doesn't work, or using, really playing to, to the strengths of, of the people. And I just wanted to make, I want to make sure that we are, you know, really working from a framework that's collaborative in spirit. And I think we, we have been, but I think those, that framework needs to be reflected in, in the rules, right? And, and so, in our resolution. And so, what I see in, in what the, what the resolution is right now, it's really more of an egalitarian, really, appointment process. And that kind of sets up the, the approach to the work that we're all going to do for, on our committees to support our community. And so, like I said, I, I think at the core of this, we need to work collaboratively, really leaving behind, you know, this framework of patriarchal, you know, designation that just kind of rewards obedience. Because during, and, you know, and after this pandemic, certainly during this pandemic, we've all seen the devastation, Councilmember Carrasco spoke about the devastation, the, the loss, really the death of our community. And so, I, I think at this point in time, we really need to start taking a look at how we change the rules so that it plays well and plays fair to our community. And part of that is having really sharing power. And I think, you know, there's a lot of folks who call in, especially Mr. Ron Soto, or Paul Soto, who comes in and kind of gives us a different perspective about what the community is feeling, what, what still lingers as they're, as they're moving through the city of San Jose and their own experiences. And so, what's left there is, is remnants of, of, of genocide that Paul Soto talked about. But also, our policy is also remnants of, of maybe old ideologies. Or at least, we need to embrace new ideologies. And the one that I'm, I'm really focused on is making sure that we share and that we, that we work collaboratively. Because like I said, our committees, we kind of set up the work in our committees that way, right? And we have work plans that guide us, but we also have to have the right people to guide us, to guide the work. And I think back to a book that Jim Collins wrote, is Good to Great. And it looked at, first of all, it looked at companies that moved themselves to what he, the success criteria to good to great. But, but he then applied those, those concepts and principles to the government. Because, you know, the government can learn from business, and business can definitely learn from government as we kind of work with, with what we have and limited resources. And I think businesses also need to learn that lesson and, and learn from how we collaboratively work together and maximize resources with nonprofits and philanthropic opportunities. So, so I think that, that we also need to follow a flow of, of improvement to not only the way that we work with one another, but to the rules that hold us to the way that we work with one another. And so, when the right, one of the things, one of the principles that Jim Collins in Good to Great, and I want to make sure that, you know, we, we are agents of change and that we're moving to make our, our city certainly a better city than when we first started our terms. And that's making sure that we have the right people. And so, the conversations that we had last week point us to a process that needs to have some changes. And so, because that, that worked, I think we also need to memorialize the, that process that we used last week by adopting rules that actually reflect that kind of collective ability to take a look at what we have in our workload, what our strengths are, and offer that as, in a conversation so that we can see who fits best, who's, you know, getting the right people on the bus, as Jim Collins would say, is, is most important, so that we can have those folks then do the work of the committee that will then lead back to the council ultimately. And so, you know, with that, I, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, offer our, our, our group the opportunity to, well, I, I want to hear back from folks because I'm not sure exactly where the middle is for this. I want, like I said, I want to work collaboratively. I think that Councilmember Esparza's memo reflects that collaboration that I'm talking about, the, 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 the moving from, from, from an egalitarian framework to one of a collaborative and shared power framework. And I want to make sure that we memorialize that. And, and so, I, I'm hoping to hear from my colleagues what, what their thoughts are, and, and so that we can, we can move forward. I like a portion of, of the mayor's memo, which is items one, two, and three, and Councilmember Esparza's memo, memo item one. I should also note that on, on the item five of the mayor's memo, it states that no changes should be made to the resolution. Yet, in item one, in that very memo, his recommendation to change Paralas for himself is a change to the resolution, because the resolution says that the mayor and the vice mayor should serve. So, we can't have it both ways, we have to make sure that the rules reflect the process that we're taking. And that is one of collaboration. And, and I want to make sure that that's the spirit and the framework that we're working from. You know, I, I also would like to accept your, your recommendation, Mayor, under your memo, to recommend me for the Human Services Commission. And I, I will accept only if, if I have submitted a memo and only if, yeah, my council colleagues could consider my recommendations in the Human Services Commission, as it has not been able to meet quorum for about a year and a half. And we, if, at the, at the heart of who we are, and we're saying, you know, we really want to get to looking at how systemic racism, racism is addressed through our Race and Equity Department, then our Human Services Commission needs to also reflect that. And so I made some recommendations. One, really making sure that we take in the disability focus, Mayor, that you had recommended in your, in your memo. And then also include a race inequity perspective, or include that department so that it can also serve the Race and Equity Division that we just developed. I, I think this, this commission can be very fruitful, but I think there's some things that we just need to change and make sure that we are setting it up for success. All right, so, you know, that really is it for me. I'm just hopeful that, that my council colleagues could take my consideration of my memo as well as think about the framework that we all want to work from. And, and making sure that we're working from having the right people on the bus, working collaboratively, making sure that we let go of, of some of the framework that might have not worked for us in the best way in past, in the past. So, those are my comments, thank you.
Is that a motion, council member, or is it just?
No, you know, I wanted to hear back from my, from my council colleagues first, before I, you know, I, I was going for that, Mayor, I won't lie. Trying to set it up for that, but I want to hear from my colleagues in the spirit of collaboration. I want to hear from my colleagues to see, what is it, you know, that, what are their thoughts? I certainly would love to, to have them support all of the recommendations that I have laid out, but I wanted to hear thoughts first.
Okay, and, and just to clarify, council member, you suggested that there was somewhere in the resolution some requirement that the mayor serve on the Rules Committee. Is, is that the implication of what you said? I don't see that in the resolution. Am I missing something?
Is that a question for Nora?
No, for, for council member, no, for, for council member Arenas, I, I think the statement was that because I suggested there shouldn't be changes to the resolution, that that contradicted with the notion of me removing myself from the Rules Committee. And I'm trying to understand where that conflict might be. Is there, is there something I'm missing? I know it's a long resolution, it might be in there somewhere.
Mayor, if I can help, I think at page twenty.
Twenty, okay, is this the revised one?
This is the draft resolution that was posted with the revisions, yeah. And page twenty, section-
That's where the language is being, got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
It's-
I see that now.
The provision is, is redlined.
Thank you, I was focused on the, the changes in pages, page fifteen. Okay, Vice Mayor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, first of all, I want to say that hearing words like collaboration and compromise are, are two of my favorite words in the English language, so I really get excited hearing them. It sounds like, at least from the initial part of the discussion- It sounds like, at least from the initial part of the discussion, that there's a lot of agreement on most of the elements in, in my memo with the mayor and Councilmember Foley and Jimenez. I also am in complete support of Councilmember Arenas's, his memo. I think that she's spot on in terms of her desire to have a focus around disability. Particularly for me, as it impacts our young boys of color. Particularly ones that have been involved with or are in the juvenile justice system. The one area where I see that there isn't a coalescing of agreement is in terms of amending the resolution. And I just want to say that I understand the, the the discussion and the rationale behind mine to amend it. But I just want to point out to the council and my colleagues that we're in the moment. And in this moment, that might seem like a great idea. Just like at the federal level, it might seem like a great idea to eliminate the filibuster or change other Senate rules or congressional rules. But if you have a new mayor, new council makeup, it might not seem like such a great idea. So I just want to just put that context or framework that, again, in the moment, it might mean one thing, but down the line, it might mean, mean another. And the other point I want to make too is that we're going through a pretty extensive process of reviewing. And we're going to have a commission that's going to come back with recommendations in terms of the authority and the accountability of the mayor. And it would be fruitful for us to delay making any decisions about this resolution until we can make a decision or our future council can make that decision in the, in the greater context of the overall structure of the city and the powers of the mayor. So, so for those reasons, again, I am in support of all the proposals that have been put out, with the exception of amending the resolution. So I'm, I want to make a motion to accept the memo from the mayor, myself, Councilmember Foley and Paral, and Jimenez, as well as accepting Councilmember Arenas's memo.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. And Vice Mayor, just to clarify, as Nora pointed out, there is some change in the resolution by necessity in the recommendation of that memo that we signed that would remove me from rules. Because the resolution originally did have the chair being the mayor. So with that modification, I assume that would be, that motion would encompass some change in the resolution to accomplish that.
Yes.
Fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. And is that all right with the second or?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to point out that on page nineteen of the old resolution, the one that we are amending already today. On page nineteen, under section H, the Rules and Open Government Committee, it does say the Rules and Open Government Committee is composed of five members. The mayor is the chairperson of the Rules and Open Government Committee. And the vice mayor is the vice chairperson. So regardless, if we are to adopt the mayor's memo today, that we still need to change the resolution. And I also.
I think that's what Vice Mayor just said.
I know, that's what you just said. I know.
Yeah, that's exactly what he just said.
That's what I'm talking, is that we do have to make, make some changes. So I, I did also want to point out with the, what the vice mayor just mentioned about the, about the charter. This is not, this is a resolution. It's a resolution that has been amended many times over the years. It is not a sacred cow. And so I will repeat that amending this resolution is not unusual. Similar changes have been amended by the city council on numerous occasions. Changes, changes to the council composition and the Rules Committee in particular have occurred with regularity over the past decades, including about a dozen times over the past decade. So this is not a sacred cow. It's not the charter. It is a resolution. And since the eighties, there have been many changes over the Rules Committee. For much of the eighties, the Rules Committee was comprised of the mayor and other standing committee chairs who were selected by each committee rather than a mayoral appointment. So each committee actually used to decide who their chair and vice chair were. And, and this composition was allowed to include the vice mayor in nineteen eighty-eight and then authorized the mayor to appoint other chairpersons. By two thousand and three, the mayor was not on rules at all. And the vice mayor was serving as chair. And at that time, there was also a dedicated alternate member, and the mayor was added again to rules in two thousand and seven. So I wanted to point that out because this isn't a filibuster. This is a resolution that we amended actually last year ourselves and are likely to, to, to continue to amend. Because I think it's good governance for the council to review our existing processes. And because I do believe that the council should be, should discuss this in public. As we heard last week, we have limitations with the Brown Act on things that we may need to discuss in open session. And, and I also want to acknowledge that this is a lot of work and want to thank the mayor and his staff, particularly Jim Reed and Henry Smith, who put in a lot of work, including the mayor, who has to take all of our lists and wants and desires. And then, and then try and put that into some kind of order that can get the city's work done. But I, I do have to fundamentally disagree that we are a new council and it is exactly appropriate to review and discuss this as a new council. We have two new members and it is an item that comes up before us every year. And so, so I think it's appropriate to amend it. And so I wanted to make a substitute motion that would approve the mayor's memo, item one through four. And that would approve Councilmember Arenas's memo that has some recommendations to revisit and review the Human Services or Human Relations Commission, whichever the title ends up being. And then I would like to add a change that I believe Councilmember Cohen has specified in his memo to amend paragraph one, rule nine, section D. And it's also in my memo to amend resolution seventy-nine, three sixty-seven. To have language that while the mayor makes a recommendation of the slate to the city council, the city council as a group has the authority to publicly discuss, amend, and approve the final slate of the standing committee members. And that's my substitute motion.
I'll second.
I believe the second was Councilmember Parals, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. A motion from Councilmember Sparza. All right, Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I'll support the substitute motion. And I, you know, people who know me know that, you know, my, I'm a stickler for rules and good governance. And, you know, we, we just followed a procedure in the last two weeks that was one that allowed the council to basically take what was a good set of recommendations from the mayor and make some changes to them through an open process that followed the Brown Act and, and took input from the council and is now bringing forward a slate of changes that the council is taking a vote on to, to approve. And that's pretty much the change to the resolution that we are recommending here is to codify the process that we just followed. So it's kind of strange to say that we shouldn't be putting into the rules the process that we just went through. So I, I do think that it just, all we're doing is saying, let's make official the process that we are following. You know, the other, the other, the second thing is that, you know, the process started here with the council saying, with a, at least what looked to be a majority of the council saying that we would amend the rules because we wanted to make a change to a few of the assignments on the mayor's recommendation. And then the, the memo coming out from the group saying, well, we'll make the changes and not require, and therefore won't, the council doesn't need to change the rules. But that threat is always out there that the council can simply just change the rules in order to overrule the mayor, which basically is the same thing as having a rule in there that the council should have final say on the list of recommendations. Which to me is better governance than having the council always have a threat to over, to be able to overrule by changing the rules at the spur of the moment. So it seems to me better to have a process by which the council approves or, or amends the recommendations than, than has a process to threaten to change the rules at any time that the majority doesn't like the recommendations that are on the table. So I, I feel like the, you know, amending the rules as proposed, either with the wording that Councilmember Sparza proposed, or just as staff recommended in the proposed resolution, no flaws. Yeah, last, just the last comment about the charter review process. While yes, there's a charter review process going on, it's going to take some time. We'll have a recommendation at the end of the year, early next year, that would then allow the council to potentially accept or not those recommendations that will then require the voters, to then require the voters to pass the recommendations or not pass the recommendations, which means that, that several years from now, there may be a different structure of government. But, you know, the, the appointments for these committees are annual. So we're going to be going through this process at least two, if not three more times before there would be any charter change. And so we ought to have a clean appointment process that we follow for now and not assume that this charter review process is going to help us guide this process in the near future. So for those reasons, I support the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I recognize we've got several folks still like to speak on the council. I have not yet gone to the public. Typically, that's what we do. So why don't I go to the public and then we'll come right back to the council. Councilmember Mayhan, is that right?
Great.
Okay. Councilmember, no, I'm sorry. Blair Beakman.
Hi, thank you. I had a, a procedural question for yourselves about committees and commissions overall. I've been writing yourselves since December about how there can be a minutes process. The human, the Human Rights Commission's always been really important to me. And it serves an incredibly important function. Just the fact that they're there, you know, in these coming months, I hope that can continue. I mean, they were going to talk about, you know, there were women's rights issues that are, that are currently going on. And that's been a whole process, years process. That's just, they talk, you know, about women's rights issues. And that's been, you know, an ongoing, you know, work and effort. And, and to simply deny those meetings for a few months, I hope you don't do that. I just hope, you know, it's always nice to hear their voice about, and their ideas about issues and ideas. With that in mind, they're, they're worried about their minutes process isn't a part of the regular commission meeting minutes that are available to the public in written form. I think that's what it is. And there's a bit of questioning in why that is. And from that, I, I started writing to you in December and I was asking the question, is there a way that I can get video minutes of the Zoom meetings from commission meetings? And I can understand if I can't, for whatever, you know, strange reasons, intrinsic reasons you have, can, can those reasons be explained to me? I mean, I'm afraid I can't even get that reasoning from yourselves. If I write you a letter and ask, you will not give me a straight answer. Now, why is that? Can I ask at this time, can I be given a straight answer why video minutes? I cannot view the video minutes of commission meetings. I think for things like the Strong Mayor and the commission, the charter commission process, public meetings and the Zoom public meetings on video really need to be public and accessible and open. So thank you if I can get something back on that. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, returning then to, just to make sure there was no other public comment. I don't see it. My frame seems to have frozen. There we go. Mr. Soto.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Man, I just, I love sharing the, 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 these meetings with, with Blair. The way that he directs his comments. I agree. I, I, I like sitting down and reviewing what people said. And the context in which they said it, who responded to what they said, that's what I do. I do this all day long. I do this all day long, on weekends. I get no days off and I don't get a dime for it. Not one penny. Nobody pays me anything. And so I would appreciate that, that these minutes, that the video of the conversations of the commissions. Because the commissions informs the council, the council then legislates policy. And so those, I learned a lot of good things in these recent commissions. One of the things that I would like to say with regard to commissions is the importance of the human services one. And so I was glad that Councilwoman Arenas addressed that. I was in attendance at the most recent one. And I had noted that, yes, they didn't make quorum. You know, and I, I appreciated that time because we were able to have just an informal conversation with each other as citizens and talk about the issues that we were, you know, contending with as a, as a, as a city. I noted that and I put in an application. I'd like to be a part of that committee. And the reason why I want to be a part of that committee is because I discovered that that was the committee that had, that Councilman Paralis used in order to put that documentary, The Kids We Lost. And, and I just, I can't say enough about how comprehensive that particular documentary is with regard to social justice and criminal justice issues. You know, you, you learned a lot from that video. There was a lot of data there. And, but you have to know how to interpret the data. I do. I do. Because of my experience, I know how to interpret that data. And so I just, I, I felt that after that conversation, that, that I felt that my, what it is that I bring to San Jose would be best served in that particular committee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's return now to the council. Councilmember Mayhan.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. Yeah, I wanted to start by just saying, I think my colleagues made some really good points. I, I, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Cohen's comments that the, the current setup is a little, a little unstable. Or kind of, we've got a set of rules that then can be kind of changed by the council if it so decides. I think Councilmember Sparza also made a very fair point that it's not particularly unusual to amend this resolution. And, and I'm very supportive of Councilmember Oranis's proposed changes as well. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of good stuff there. I think the, the one point I wanted to raise and where I may disagree with some of my colleagues is the idea that the Charter Review Commission is not relevant here. And I, I actually think it's very relevant and is worth taking a bit more time to incorporate this, these questions into. I think for, for some of the key questions such as committee leadership, where I think we're very different from the intergovernmental bodies that Councilmember Cohen referenced in his memo. I really think that's part of the broader conversation about the governance of the city. And particularly, you know, if we step back, what I think we're talking about here is just the, the scope of the office of the mayor and what are the powers of that office. And, and, you know, I think an argument could be made. I've no idea where the commission will come out on this, but I, you know, I think an argument could be made that whoever the mayor is, regardless of their political beliefs, race, ethnicity, gender, and so forth, that is the one person on the dais who was elected by a majority of the residents citywide. And so that off, you know, I don't think in that context, egalitarianism is necessarily the right principle to use. It may be. But I just, I feel like there's a broader set of questions about the role of the mayor, the powers of that office, how it, how it interacts with the council. And committees, these committees actually feel very relevant to that conversation. So personally, I agree with the vice mayor that making that part of the broader conversation about the governance of the city and the respective roles of the mayor and the rest of the council and the committees. To me, it all just feels like one body of work. So I, I just wanted to throw out there that I, I really feel like that's a better process to direct some of these questions to. Not to say that. Not to say that we could never, we, we, you know, can't amend this resolution or that something horrible is going to happen. If we do, it just feels more appropriate to take it up through that process. So wanted to just share that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the, the dialogue from my, my colleagues as well. I think there have been some, some good suggestions here. And, you know, I think actually along the lines of what Councilmember Mayhend was just saying, I don't think there's, it should be any fear why we shouldn't do both potentially. And I think both are going to happen, quite frankly. Our Charter Revision Commission is looking at the power makeup and structure of the council and the mayor and the city manager. And they're going to do that regardless whether or not we, you know, we make a decision on this resolution today. And so I think that will happen and we can feel comfortable that that is going to happen. And then additionally, as Councilmember Asparza pointed out, the resolution is, is not a component of the charter. It's a resolution. It's a resolution that has regularly been changed. In fact, right, as recently as last year. And so that is something that this council and councils going back, right, have, have looked at and have made changes to. And so I think we can safely say, right, we're going to look at all sorts of shifts within the Charter Revision Commission. And at the same time, this is completely something that's reasonable to look at and, and ask to have happen today because this is actually going to affect how we're moving forward, at least for the next year or two. And so I think I, you know, certainly comfortable with the, the current motion, the substitute motion that's, that's on the table and will be supporting that. And thank you, Mayor. As you know, I've been bugging you for six years to try and get on the Rules Committee. And so we were not in the, the Brown Act and I, and I, and I'll mention it here. I didn't necessarily have a discussion with you beforehand on your suggestion. But I think it went without saying that certainly that's something I've been interested in for some time. Thanks.
Well, as my mother used to say, be careful what you ask for in life. You might get it. Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I, I have some comments, but I first wanted to ask Nora a question. Nora, let's just assume that we don't amend the resolution. Things stay as they are. The under, the underlying motion prevails. This time next year, the, the same thing can happen, right? I mean, it seems based on the city attorney's offices analysis is that we, as the council, mayor brings forward recommendations and we, you know, assuming we see things differently, we can do things differently, correct? Is that?
Yes. Are you asking about Section H though specifically?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to. Yes, if the question sort of alludes to that section. I, I guess I'm just curious what happens if we don't do anything, right? It seems to me, and maybe it's my, maybe I'm not interpreting it properly, but it seems to me that if we don't do anything, if we don't amend the resolution, that the status quo prevails and that, you know, I guess barring some changes within the resolution, taking out the mayor as the, as the chair of Rules Committee, whatever it may be now that he's off, barring those minor sort of adjustments, the status quo would prevail and theoretically we can have a similar type of conversation next year, right?
Yes.
So, so it seems to me that it's always, the reason I ask that is it seems to me that even though we haven't explicitly had this conversation, that even the years prior of me being on the council, I suspected, I've always suspected, and I think based on your analysis is really borne out to be correct, is that the mayor makes a recommendation and quite frankly, if we don't see it that way, we can adjust things and recommend something else, right? And that's in fact what, essentially what sort of has happened in this occasion. And so, and so that's my thinking around it. But, but I also have to say, just for everyone, all my colleagues is, I don't have a principal stance on this. I could see it both ways. Quite frankly, the reason I signed on to the memo is that I, I thought that the main bone of contention and the thing that was of most interest for folks is really to change the dynamic of rules. Because I think the, the topic of rules got thrown out time and again. And I know obviously that's one of the most important committees. And that's why I, I thought it was important to, obviously, you know, Councilmember Peralis on there, making sure we have a good representation of, of, of women on rules, which I think is important, things of that nature. And, and so, so I, I, I think there's a few things. The, the, the folks that desire to change the resolution, I guess it seems to me that we can still do some of this irregardless of whether we change it or not. That's one of the views that I have on this other end. On the other end though, I also don't, I'm not too sensitive or concerned about not sending this to the Charter Review Committee. And something that Councilmember Peralis also touched on that I think would cross my mind is, assuming the resolution was amended and changed and the substitute motion prevails, that doesn't suggest we still can't send this to the Charter Review Commission, right? That we can't address that. And I appreciate that it provides clarity for, for some of the folks and it makes it more explicit. But I think even if we didn't make it more explicit, it seems to me that we could still do the same thing. And so I'm a little conflicted, to be honest with you. I can see it both ways. I personally have no dog in this fight. This is not something that I think, quite frankly, I thought it was going to be as big an issue, as an issue as it is, has become, it seems. And so I, I just wanted to sort of put that out there, that I can see it both ways, that certainly appreciate both perspectives, appreciate the perspective about good governance. I think obviously there's something to be said about that as it relates to sending it to the Charter Review Commission. But I don't, I think if we didn't do that, I don't think that necessarily erodes this concept of good governance. Likewise, I also appreciate what Councilmember Cohen said about good governance and having something sort of set in stone without consistent amendments, although I suspect that can happen as well, depending on the, on the makeup of the council. And so I just wanted to express my perspective. I, I think there's probably a few other folks that want to talk. So I'll sit back and, and watch, but to be honest with you, I, I thought this would be a non-issue. But here we are. Thank you.
Here we are. Councilmember Ross?
Oh, I think I just spoke, sorry.
Oh, you already spoke. I'm sorry, your hand didn't go down. I'm sorry. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I wanted to reflect on in, on some of the comments that I've heard so far is that when I spoke earlier, I was speaking strictly about the, the framework, the process that we use to decide on committees. And the process isn't egalitarian. Now, the way that we are voted in is a completely different process. And, and simply because somebody, the mayor, the position of the mayor, not, not to say exclusively to you, Mayor, but to any, any mayor in any city, doesn't mean that because he's voted in by all of the city that, that, that that person gets absolute power to make changes. Because it doesn't, it doesn't translate to collaboration. And so this is the, this is a point to, that was the point to my comments. That was point to, I believe, the spirit of the motion that's on the floor. At least that's the reason why I'm supporting it. And so it, it doesn't, I, I think this, this discussion really is talking about how do we work with one another, or how do we collaborate? How do we figure out if we're using each, you know, playing to our strengths in the committees that we serve? And, and I'll tell you, I, some of the committees that I have, I don't know if it's playing to my strength. And I was certainly not asked, hey, do you want all of these committees? It wasn't a question. It wasn't an ask. And I, I don't know who, one of my colleagues said, you know, you, mayor checks in or asks. It's not an ask. It's a, you know, he makes the recommendations and whether you, your passion is elsewhere, that's the recommendation. So I really appreciate the, the, the very healthy discussion that we've been having since the 12th about making changes to, to what we have. Now, I've, I've added the Human Services Commission that I think, hopefully it'll, you know, my recommendations will pass, that'll add to my workload. And I, I do want to, on the, on the premise of making sure that the right people are on the, on the, on the bus. If I'm getting another committee added to my workload, I would ask my colleagues to consider filling in or taking on Transportation and, and Environment Committee. And, and maybe, you know, those folks who sit on VTA, I don't have all of them in front of me, but I think, of course, I think Councilmember Carrasco and Jimenez and Peralis. I'm not sure. Davis, I think is an alternate. But anyways, if there's other, is there, if there's somebody else who would like to take TNE, this is part of the discussion. This is why I think we need to change the rules around this is that we need to play to the, our strengths and we need to make sure that we have an, an equal workload. You know, I do notice, and I said on the 12th, that some of my colleagues only have two standing committees. Last year I had, for the last two years, I had four, four standing committees along with non-standing committees, one of which met every week. So there's folks who only have two. And so I'd like to ask those folks who only have two, or those folks who are best interested in TNE to please consider my, my, my offer to, to be part of, of a transportation, Transportation and Environment Committee versus myself. And so I'm putting that one out there and hopefully somebody can, can speak up about that. I think that's the, the last, the last point I just want to make is that, you know, if, if this particular piece of the conversation and how we work with one another, the rules around how we work with one another around committees is sent to the charter, it translates to me that, and at least we're telling our residents, the ones who voted us in, we can't make a decision about how to work with one another. So please make that decision for us. And I think that we are having a really good, healthy, really conversation about that. I think we all have very decent conversations about, about working with one another. So I really don't think that this is an item that is relevant to the charter. This is a resolution, not a charter. We are not addressing the items that are in the charter that relate to the committees. If we were, then I would say it's relevant. Let's send that piece to the Charter Revision Committee, but we're not. This is a resolution and so this is up to us as a group to decide. Kicking it down the road, I don't think is the best approach. So, you know, just lastly, I just want to really outright ask some of my council colleagues if they would be willing to step up. And I think there is Councilmember Jimenez, Councilmember Foley. I can't even ask Davis or Carrasco because I, I think you guys are already on TNE or anybody else who would consider taking on a committee.
Councilmember Arenas, I'd take it on. It's not my strength either, but I'm happy to add it if the council so wishes.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley. I really and truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley, for stepping up to take that. I appreciate all the comments and views. I, I don't want to, this point, I'd like to really hear my colleagues out, but I do want to at least ensure that the factual record's clear. Councilmember Arenas, you may not have meant this exactly the same way, but I think you suggested that we, I did not solicit your views about your council appointments. And in fact, on January 1st at 10:00 AM, we had a con, a conversation in which I asked you about your committee assignments and which ones you believe you'd most like to have, that you don't have, and which ones you at least like to have that you currently do have. And then I also sent up a follow-up text to you. I think you should discover last week because you sent me a text just recently. In addition, Henry Smith on my team reached out to Patrick Garrity on your team twice, asking for conversation about this very subject, to elicit your views. And he was not responded to. So I just want to make it clear, we are doing our best to try to elicit the perspectives of all the, the council members. I understand that may not change anyone's view about this, but I want to at least make sure the record's clear that we are doing our best to hear the point of view of, of council members. If their staffs don't respond, that obviously limits the conversation that we can have. Councilmember Cohen?
Mayor, can I respond to that? As you pointed that particular item for me. You know, I, I'll say this, I was recovering from, from COVID. It was, you know, the first of the year. I hadn't checked in with our city attorney. And so I wasn't sure whether, what kind of conversation to have with you. And that's something that I clarified on the dais and Nora cleared up for me. So, you know, I, I wasn't sure whether I could say yes or no, or say, hey, the, this is the list that I really would love. And if that, you know, if I understood that, I, and I misunderstood the Brown Act. I thought we couldn't have an in-depth conversation. Because I was already in a Brown Act, so I didn't want to commit a violation. And so that's where I was coming from with that. And, you know, in, in terms of my, my office, I know that I, I will always stand up for my, for my team. They're an excellent team and, you know, I apologize on their, on their behalf if, if something didn't click. There's always the, the human error, certainly. But my point was not to, to say that you didn't do your part in terms of, of reaching out. One, it was my misinterpretation of the Brown Act and not violating Brown Act. So I was very conservative about that. But second, it, it isn't, I, I don't know if it's an ask. And, you know, if we give you a laundry list of the things that we want, that we will certainly get, get that. As Councilmember Peralis stated earlier, for six years, he's been interested in rules. And just now he is, he's getting that position. So anyways, I just wanted to make sure I responded to that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And, you know, you're right. It's never the case that everybody gets what they want. In fact, and nobody gets what they want when there are a scarce number of slots. And we know that there are some particularly, the particular committees and assignments that people want it that are in very high demand. And so there's no question that everyone comes away a little disappointed from the process. I think no matter who does the allocation. But my recollection of our conversation on January 1st was that we did have an extensive conversation. In fact, I asked you whether you prefer VTA or rules. And you said at the time, VTA. And, and that's what motivated my recommendation that came out in that memorandum. And so there was a conversation. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, and Councilmember Arenas, I'm the naive new council member who's not disappointed to have four assignments. And I guess I'll, I'll regret that later. I want to clarify a few things with, you know, about my thought process on this. First of all, I want to, I do want to commend the mayor. I know he tries hard to be fair and make good assignments here. And I don't think any of this, none of my view is reflective of what, what I believe is his good faith effort to try to balance these committees and do a good job of appointing people to committees. And I will say, I had an interesting conversation with a council member in a neighboring city over the weekend, last weekend. And, and there are far more problems in some of these assignments in other cities. There's a mayor in a neighboring city who appointed one member, one council member to 11 committees and another to one committee because of favoritism in certain, in other cities. So that we have, we don't have, you know, we certainly can see things going much, much worse than they have been going. But, you know, the way, the way our process looks and the way I hear people going aren't necessarily anxious to amend our resolution is that they're saying that when we have a majority who isn't happy with the process, well, we're just going to go through this vote every time to, and, and kind of push to get it amended, to get the assignments changed anyway. And so my push really is just to say, if that's the way it is, when there's a majority on the council who wants something different, we're going to, it's going to happen regardless of whether the rules say it should happen or not. That just seems strange to me. So my push is just to say, if a, if a majority of the council is ever going to want to change, there should be a process by which the majority of the council can get that change and have that be in the code. And that's why I've been pushing for this rule change. It's just very simple to me. The other thing I just want to say is about the Charter Review Process. I, I don't think I ever suggested that this, the Charter Review Process wouldn't be an appropriate place to have this conversation. It's just that we don't know, there's no certain outcome of the Charter Review Process. And in the meantime, we will be appointing this committee, these committee assignments for at least two to three more years before there is any outcome of the Charter Review Process. And we have to have a reasonable and clear process for doing so. And so, you know, as, as Councilmember Peralis said, this is a, this is not an either or, this is both. The Charter Review as, as Councilmember Peralas said, this is a, this is not an either or, this is both. The Charter review process will go through its review, and we ought to have a clear process for the assignments in the meantime.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralas?
Yeah, actually, I was just, you know, Councilmember Cohen stole, stole, stole my comments. So I was going to echo some of that in regards to just, I think, the, the timing and, and, and the ability of the council. And hence why I think, you know, we, we should not feel uncomfortable moving forward with, with both strategies here and, and being able to make that decision. I know Councilmember Jimenez said he sort of, maybe still up in the air about it. So that's, that's my comment was, as well, trying to maybe encourage, you know, just an understanding of why I think, you know, we should also make that decision today on the resolution. And, yeah, that's my call. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Carrasco?
Hi, I just wanted, you know, I just wanted to make a brief point. I appreciate Councilmember Arenas's comments regarding her, her assignments, but I just really needed to, to say something very quickly because I have two of the standing committees. But in total, I have 12 assignments, which includes VTA, which I picked up, which meets on a monthly basis with an additional committee that we were given. And I don't know if I'm going to have one assignment or two assignments from VTA. So I wanted to, to just mention that. It may not be a standing committee from the city, but I picked that up because Councilmember Arenas couldn't take that on. But I just felt like the need to go ahead and say that because I was one of the ones that only had the two standing committees, and I didn't take TNE, not because I didn't want to, but having the 12, and I was just added another COVID weekly meeting in addition to all of the work that we're doing. And I, it just was not a possibility for me. So just wanted to make clear that I'm not shunning my responsibilities. It's just that the staff that I have is unable to be stretched anymore so than we're, we're doing right now with all of the COVID cases and all the COVID work that we're doing. So I appreciate Councilmember Foley for taking that on. And we just couldn't do that anymore. And just like last week, you know, Councilmember Arenas, I appreciate, you know, the, the lack of childcare in your home. As a single mom raising three teenagers, it's just becoming increasingly more difficult as so many other single moms are having a hard time managing and juggling the workload that they have in their own homes. We're, I'm doing the best that I can with all of the other responsibilities. But again, I'll do the best that I can, and my staff will continue to do what they can do. But right now, I think that we are as full as we can be. So I appreciate Councilmember Foley for really stepping up right now. Thank you.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, Councilmember Foley. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to, to prove what a thankless task the mayor has every year. Add, I'm going to add to it. I, I'm, as I think Councilmember Carrasco mentioned, I'm in a Brown Act with Councilmember Arenas and, my, as many folks know, my district is a very high-needs district and has been very active with COVID. And so we are either in here or in the community every day. And so I wanted to start that, give that introduction, because I did give the mayor a list of assignments. I did, and he listened, and I very much appreciated it. And I have, I don't know, are we counting? I have 15 and four standing committees. So, you know, I don't know if we're going to have like a little tally on our tic-tac-toe right now, but.
Henry's got that if you want to look, yeah.
But I, given that situation, I did want to ask Councilmember Arenas, because we did just have a side conversation. Councilmember Arenas, I know the mayor has been working to achieve gender parity on rules. It's one of the goals that he has talked about. Is rules something that you could accommodate with your schedule?
Oh, Councilmember Sparza?
I know.
No, listen, and I want to say this, that my comments were not to shame anybody or to put anybody on the spot by any means. And so I apologize if my comments came out like that. I don't, I think all of you know me well enough to know that I, I don't work from, from that base of shaming others to take on things this way. I'm just being very honest about what I can handle and also with the principles of, you know, who's the right person for, for a committee. And so I think, you know, if you can appreciate my, the vulnerability of putting myself out there and actually saying that. Otherwise, you know, I would just carry on and do the same and try to, to have it all and do it all, right? And so, so listen, Councilmember Sparza, I know that you, you also have many, many committees. I would consider your, your rules. I know that I just freed myself up from so this to me is, is, I know it's a, it's a huge ask. And I don't know if actually this, are you saying that you would make this as a motion in your, your substitute?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to ask you up in front of folks. Yeah. So if you, I would accept the amendment.
Okay, got it. Okay. Anybody else? Is Raul waiting to speak? You know, listen, I, I will, I will go ahead and accept your proposal for, for rules. And like I said, listen, I'm not, I, I hope that nobody took my comments the wrong way. And if they, and if anybody did, I'm trying to clarify that now. In the spirit of collaboration and working with one another, well, I will accept the rules.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sparza, is there a proposed, I assume that's an amendment to the motion. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, is there someone that you would recommend that would come? Oh, yeah, the second or, just to be, to complete the thought, is there someone you recommend would come off of rules or just that the rules would expand to six members?
I apologize. I meant for myself. I apologize. I didn't mean to freak anybody out on that.
Oh, okay. So, so she, so Councilmember Arenas was to plant you?
Correct, correct. My apologies.
Okay. All right. So is the second or clear about that?
Now I am. Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that's Councilmember Peralas. Councilmember Peralas, you're up next.
Yeah, sorry. This is, certainly has gone on quite a bit, but I've gotten several text messages, and I apologize. I did not mention, but obviously, I'm looking a little, a little different. I was diagnosed with Bell's palsy last week, and so the right side of my face is temporarily paralyzed. And so that's the, that's the reason for some of, sort of what you're seeing, what looks like I went to the dentist recently. So, but, but wanted to make mention of that for anybody that was, like I said, I was getting several text messages, so.
Thank you, Councilmember, and we certainly wish you well. We hope that that is just a temporary challenge for you. But thank you for, for sharing. Okay, any, any final comments on this? I would just offer that, at least until a minute ago, the motions were completely identical in terms of who sits in what seat. And I suppose that change could have been made anytime, but appreciate that everybody worked it out on the dais. So it's fair to say there's, there's no direct impact. And I guess Councilman Jimenez probably put it well about that, because all this could be reconsidered next year, two years from now, I should say, when we have a new council, a new mayor at that time. I don't have a particular horse in this race since none of these decisions will affect me. All the appointments essentially will have been made, and it'll be up to the next mayor and the next council. But I am sympathetic to the notion that, you know, we've tasked a commission to look at this balance of authority and role and responsibility of various folks of, of the council, of the mayor, of the staff within the city. And then obviously, for the council to make very important decisions about what we put in front of the voters. And I think Councilmember Mayhoun put it well, this is something that is going to, it may well significantly realign decision-making within the city. It seems to me for us to make this decision now is a bit premature, and it certainly doesn't take this decision away. In fact, I would, I would submit that our making a decision for the next mayor and the next council is probably not the best use of our time, and they probably would appreciate just making their own decision and us leaving it to them. So I'm sympathetic to that notion. But frankly, I don't think any of this makes a difference in the end, in terms of where we sit and what we do. So I just hope we can vote and get on to our work. So let's vote then on Councilmember Sparza's motion.
Mayor, could I hear what the motion is again? I'm just not sure which part of which memos were included.
I can state it, or Tony wants to state it.
I have the mayor's memo, items one through four, the memo from Councilmember Arenas, number three from Councilmember Cohen's memo, number one from Councilmember Sparza's memo, putting Foley on, Councilmember Foley on TNE instead of Carrasco, and appointing Arenas instead of Sparza on rules.
I think it was item number two from the Cohen memo, items number one and the two.
And on TNE, it was Foley instead of Arenas.
That's right. I had not put the, the Carrasco-Arenas name and added it later, long after the conversation. Thank you.
And I think we also, I missed in my memo number two that we have to amend the Section H also, right? Strike the language in Section H. That, that was probably specified in, in there somewhere.
Yes. Yeah, I have that, the, just clarify the mayor's membership on rules.
But does not include item three from the Cohen memo, is that correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, let's make sure there's absolute clarity. Everybody know what we're voting on? This is Councilmember Sparza's motion, seconded by Councilmember Peralas.
Mayor, just one clarification question. So as far as the involvement of the Charter Review Commission, is it, are we, are we leaving that question or issue? Or unresolved or?
Unresolved.
On the Charter Review Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, we could take that up on another day if somebody wants to expand the scope of the Charter Review Commission.
All right, thank you.
I would imagine, since we haven't, we haven't agendized that, we probably shouldn't talk about it here. Okay.
Ready?
Right.
Okay. Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen? Carrasco? Carrasco?
Sorry, I got disconnected.
Is that a yes?
Tony, I'm sorry. Are we voting on the substitute?
Yes.
Is this Maya Sparza's?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Aye. Thank you.
Davis?
Aye.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhoun?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm glad we had all that debate so we could vote unanimously. Here we go. We're on to the item two point. Forgive me, I just lost the item that.
Two thirteen, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much for helping me there. Two point thirteen, which is the report on bids and award of contract for Coyote Creek. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this, this item because I, I felt it was important to have a public discussion about it. We have voted on the Coyote Creek Trail prior on the Phase One portion from Story to Phelan. The portion that we are voting on today is for essentially the jungle. And so I wanted to ask about the history of this. One, I think the history of the Story to Phelan portion was tied to a state grant which provided $10 million to Renaissance Place. It's a permanent supportive housing development on Center Road. And then, but the jungle portion, oh, I see Eve popped up. So Eve, could you give some history, please, on this phase of the project, how it's being funded, and why we're doing this now, please? I can't hear you. Maybe it's a Bluetooth doohickey.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So the, the, you're correct, the funding we had for the work from Story to Phelan is through an AHSC grant through the state. The funding we have for the current project for today's council item is through the Safety Lou Federal Transportation Bill. And that was passed in 2005, I believe, and became accessible to California in 2008. This is money that we've used over a number of years to prepare master plans, design documents, and currently using it towards this project. The, you might ask, well, that money's been around a long time. Couldn't it be around much longer? And, and that's not the case here, in that we worked with Caltrans through every phase of our project to get permission to use the funds. So most recently, we received from Caltrans the notice that we could proceed with construction, and we are now on notice that we need to be invoicing regularly. We have done so up to this point with the charges we've incurred to finish our design and bid work, but they're expecting for us to start invoicing for construction to sustain this funding. Otherwise, we think we may risk the loss of this, this money.
So in other words, if we don't proceed, this could jeopardize the trail completely, and Caltrans is telling us that right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it would leave a gap in the system now. We're making progress from Story to Phelan.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make that clear. I mean, we, we are in a pandemic. We do have housing staff who are, are PRNs and housing staff who are working on a lot of other things. And so I wanted to pull that out for the public discussion, for folks to understand why this is not something that, that would be our, our choice, but it, the city's faced with a difficult decision. And so I also wanted to ask, is there anyone from housing here? I thought I saw Rachel. Oh, there's Reagan. Okay. Hi, I wanted to ask, you know, given that we're still in COVID and it's winter, and I know you guys are working really hard right now because we're standing some warming centers, or we're doing a lot of outreach and activity right now. What is our plan? I mean, this is the jungle, right? This is, this is, this is quite a bit of work, a big project, and there are a lot of people that are impacted in this area. What is the city's outreach plan? Well, one, to outreach, and two, to house folks that might be displaced from their, their home, essentially in the jungle.
Member Reagan Henninger with the Housing Department. Thanks for the question. So we have been coordinating quite closely with the Public Works team on the schedule and the timing. The more time that we, the Housing Department and our homeless street outreach teams have to outreach to the site and to spend in the site, the better. So we've appreciated that close coordination with Public Works and their flexibility so far. However, as Eve said, you know, we do have some funding that's at jeopardy if we don't move forward. So Housing has been working with our street outreach teams to frequently visit the site. We're doing as many vulnerability assessments or VI Spadat. We're doing as many vulnerability assessments or VI Spadats as we can, and that's really the initial tool and assessment that people take to get into our housing and services queue, and so that's a high priority. Our outreach teams have a few tools available to them. They can refer individuals to the shelter at South Hall. And then any individuals that are medically vulnerable can be referred to get that assessment and a referral to hotels. And then we also have our BHC sites that are, the Mayberry site and also the site at Felipe will open later this month. And it could be possible to refer folks to that site as well. So those are our existing tools. Unfortunately, we don't have any new shelters opening that would be able to accommodate everyone in this stretch. It's, we're estimating about 70 people are currently in this stretch.
Okay, 70 people in the jungle. Do we think that's an accurate number or does that sound low to you? It sounds low to me, so. But, but you've been in there, and I know already folks have been outreach to in the other phase, so I just.
Okay. This is an area, Councilmember, that we have already had consistent outreach in by one of our city outreach teams. With the goal, since we cleared the jungle some years ago, to not have it as heavily reencamped as it was those years ago.
Okay. And can you walk me or walk us through what the timing is for notifying the residents and the businesses nearby of abating the site? So we've done, there are informal and then formal notices. Is that correct? And what's the timing of that?
So the notices have, have already begun and those conversations have begun with the unsheltered individuals in the encampment. Once it's time to abate, we'll get, we'll do the formal 72 hours notice, which is in accordance with our current protocol.
And then I had a question. I'm not sure who to ask this to, if it's PRNs or, but so there are some issues with, we have been providing porta potties and hand washing stations and supports to many areas through the city, including this stretch of Story Road. And so my understanding is with the porta potty located on the east bank where construction will be occurring, what's the plan to relocate the porta potties? I mean, people, people use them. They need it, right? So.
Yeah, so we would relocate it to a different area of need, and we have not determined yet where we would relocate it to.
Okay. And how are we coordinating the pilot trail safety plan for phase one with the construction of phase two?
Thank you, Councilmember. We're within Parks and Rec. We have our trail manager working with our senior ranger, who is going to be forming a committee that reaches out to the police department, the housing department, other city departments, as well as some of our strong advocates in the area. And we're, the, the plan is to have that trail safety plan operational in a pilot form to be used at, at this site as the project is open to the public. We don't have a construction opening date yet, but we'd be looking at a start of construction in May.
Okay. Thank you. And then lastly, understanding that the funding for this process was through a federal grant with timing requirements. Does Beautify SJ and Housing, or do Beautify SJ and Housing have the capacity to support cleanup activities to stay on this timeline?
I'm, I'm gonna speak to, to that point and say that I, our director, John Sorelli with Parks and Recreation has been working closely with all members of our team, including Beautify SJ. This is a, a project of high importance to the department as we build out the trail network. So we're, we're looking to engage the resources as we as available to get the work done.
Does that include housing?
Yeah, Councilmember, I would just put a finer point on what you've said, and that, you know, we have our daily Beautify SJ and Housing meetings, and this is one of the projects that we've just been communicating about almost daily and coordinating on. So it is in our current work plan.
Thank you. I just, this is a, this is a lot, and there's, there, it's not the only, I mean, it's probably the biggest, but it's not the only one. And there's, there's a lot of activity happening in the city, and I wanted to just ensure that our city teams have the capacity to, to not just serve this site, but all the others that I know, I know are part of the work plan. So, okay, thank you for that. So with that, I will move to approve the rebid. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Let's go to members of the public. This is specifically on the bid on the contract for the Coyote Creek Trail, 16th Story Road. Mr. Soto?
Yeah, Paul Soto, I was, I read, I recalled when the jungle was dismantled. That was actually, you weren't in office, Mayor LaCardo, no, I think that was one of your first things that you did in office was go to that particular area and clean that area up. I remember it clearly. And that area has been, it's literally been home for a lot of that population. I was, I was, I went through that trail recently. And I want to thank you, Councilwoman Sparza, for your sensitivity to the issues with regard to the trails. You see, because these are the places where people have been marginalized, and these are now the places that are going to be targeted for construction. Construction equals disruption for certain classes of people, which goes back to the generational poverty that has been created in the city and that COVID has accelerated. And so I also want to thank you, Councilwoman, for making clear the funding source. My question is, because I was, I was, I was hot when I read this, because Chicharelli is putting the trails you know, on, over there in Willow Glen. So I mean, thank you for clarifying in terms of the funding source. But that was, it's been on the table since that time, 2008, nothing was done. You know, people could have been acclimated to, if you wanted to use those monies to improve this area, those monies, that could have already been set in place, and people could have acclimated to it. But now, at this very critical moment, when there's gentrification and COVID working simultaneously with each other against the population, now we have this issue. And you, just so you know, people are not going to leave. They're gonna have to forcefully remove them from that area.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman.
Hi, there has been, this is Blair Beckman here. There has been about three items the past three weeks, council meetings of trails, issues. This is interesting. I think trail work, and I mentioned in all, in all of these three separate occasions that you know, the, the open public policy ideas with trail work, I think is a really interesting idea. And it's a way to, you know, both the everyday community and local government can figure out together how to work on open public policy ideas. It seems the perfect vehicle, so to speak, to do that, you know? So it's nice to mention it again, and, because there will be technology, there will be surveillance, there will be data collection along the trails in some form. And, you know, it's, I've just always been thinking about lately, you know, just walking down a trail, thinking that, you know, the mayor's developed some pretty nice open policies about how, you know, technology is taking place as I'm walking on this trail. That's comforting. I think it would be a lot more comforting than, than people feeling hostile or, you know, feeling they're being spied upon, and, you know, all that stuff. And yeah, I just feel, you know, to, to work on all of those issues, I think it's the perfect way to do it. And, and the City of Davis is, I always mention, they've had, they've done a great policy job with their, they've worked with the Surveillance and Technology Ordinance stuff to create a bunch of good policies for trail use. Look into them, and thanks again for, for your time and listening to me and my ram, continuous ramblings on this subject. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's return to the council. And Councilmember Sparza, I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, because I know the words rebid are in the caption, but you're, you're making a motion to go forward with the prevailing bid. Is that right?
Correct, yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Okay, I just want to make sure I knew exactly. Any other comments? All right, let me suggest we move on before voting, and we take on the next consent item, because I suspect we could do this a bit more efficiently by taking everything together. Councilmember Mayhan, I believe you wanted to pull item 2.15, which is the acceptance of the Retirement Plan's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Yeah, I had a couple of comments and questions on that one.
Great.
Should I jump in?
Please do.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'll, I'll try to be quick. So, you know, my, my understanding, if I'm reading the reports correctly, is that in, in fiscal years, 1819, our return on police and fire infederated were both at 4.3%. And then in 1920, we were at a little lower, 3.1 and 3.6 respectively. Both, all four of those rates being below the 6.625 target rate of return. And obviously, that's during a period of generally what's been economic expansion, and certainly the financial markets have done extremely well. So, you know, nothing, these observations and my questions I'm about to ask, I'm sure are not new for this body, but maybe just as a new member, feel like I need to ask them and better understand. So your first question is just, you know, from my understanding, are there any particular barriers or rules or restrictions in place that we should be aware of that's limiting our ability to meet our target rate of return and perform closer to where financial markets seem to be performing? Because we seem to be underperforming even in the best years, which to me at least is, is pretty concerning. And I'm not sure if that's for, that's probably for Roberto, is that right?
Yes, Councilmember Mayhan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks, thanks for being here.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for your questions. Certainly a very fair question. And, you know, we communicated earlier, so as you probably know, the, both boards over time since early in the last decade, they decided to change the asset allocations of both plans to, to a lower risk profile. And the reason for that was that both of those plans, their support ratio, which is the ratio of retired members and deferred members to active members, is relatively high compared to our peers across the state and the nation. It's about 1.6 to 1. What that means is that it makes the boards and, and the volatility on the assumptions, but especially in the investment markets more sensitive. And so because of that, the boards have decided to maintain a lower risk profile. So in years, as you stated, where the economy has been growing, we have been lagging our peers, mostly because of the lower risk profile, meaning that we have lower growth assets, namely less equities. And when I say less equities, I mean considerably. So we may have 30% equities of the total asset allocation versus some of their peers may have 50%, right? So when the market is doing well, they are going to outperform us. Conversely, what has been important to, to both boards is to try to participate from the upside while limiting the downside when the, the returns are down or even negative, right? So, and I think as I explained before, there's a very fine line between doing that and balancing those returns with the budget impact to the city when returns are down. And so that's really the main reason why we have been lagging our peers on returns, and maybe another issue is, I mentioned before, the sequence of returns, right? We, we hear in the media mostly about a very well-known index, say like the Dow Jones or the S and P, where they have returned 20, 30%. Those returns are on a calendar year basis. When we announce our returns, and as you see in the chapters, those are fiscal year returns. So let me give you the very good example of 2020. Our returns as of June 30th are very different than our returns as of the calendar year 2020. As you mentioned, the returns for the plans for fiscal year 2020 are in the 3 to 2.5%, which by the way, they were in the top quartile of, of public pension plans, because the average was in the 1%. But if you look at the returns that we actually earned over the calendar year 2020, they're about 15%. Again, we are now in the top decile, and it's about 15% because why? Because of the sequential returns, meaning the bulk of the Dow Jones and S and P returns happen on the second half of the year. You won't see that on the returns as of June 30th. So, but again, I, I do want to caution, we remain vigilant. Obviously, we understand the markets are very volatile. And again, the main, the main goal of the boards is to make sure that we participate at the upside while limiting the downside and the returns, so as to limit the impact to the plan sponsoring in, in the budget process. In closing, I do want to mention, and I know you are new to the council, but most of the council members know this. Because both boards were keeping a lowered risk profile, meaning having less growth assets invested or equities, when the pandemic took place and, and it went down considerably in about 45 days, we were able to call board meetings led by our CIO and the staff and the boards agreed to increase the risk profile, meaning that we decided to invest the, the amount of equities that we have in, in both plans. Now, it is, it was, is higher than it initially was, is still considerably less than our peers. So going forward, we may at times may lack our peers, but we did take advantage of the downturn and were able to increase the equity withholding as the market was coming up. That's the reason for the very good returns that we have had over the last calendar year. But again, I just caution everyone not to read too much into it from this standpoint. That too, we are very mindful of the potential volatility in the markets going forward, so we have to keep track of that. And second, both plans and boards will entertain asset allocations reviews in the coming months. So once that's completed, we'll be back to the boards to provide the information, but also to the city. So hopefully that answered the question, Councilmember Mayhan.
Yeah, that was a lot of context. I appreciate it. It's certainly helpful and makes sense that we've got the lower risk profile, I think. Although I'm glad to hear that, that we were able to quickly respond to the market downturn, take advantage of that, and you know, curious if, if that's, you know, greater exposure to equities might actually make sense. But, but I understand your point. So is there any reason to believe in a downturn, which is quite, and at some point, the economy's got to cool off in the financial mar, I mean, it sort of has, but the financial markets as well. Is there any reason to believe that our returns will be higher than they've been in a, in a market downturn? I imagine there's not.
Well, if I understood your question, if there's a market downturn, what we truly would expect is that we certainly will have lower returns, but we would expect those returns to be potentially better than our peers. Now, that does not translate into that we're going to be meeting our assumed return, right? Because I think that's the, that's the point that you made, and in terms of expected rate of return, I, I think I mentioned, the boards have, over the last 10 years, have steadily moved down those returns from about 8% to about 6.625 today, which in terms of public plans, not only across the state, but the nation, is one of the lowest ones that you will find in an open public pension plan, as opposed to a closed independent pension plan. So they, they have been very aggressive about that, but also have been mindful that, that there is a balancing act. have been mindful that there is a balancing act between making sure that we have reasonable assumptions while also understanding that there are implications to the membership and also to the plan sponsor in terms of the budget process.
Right, thank you. And I think it's great that we made the tough, but I think fiscally responsible decision to lower the expected rate of return, which is, I think, proven to be the right move. I guess the question is, given that we're still not averaging, you know, our average performance over the last five years or so, ten years, as far as I understand, is still not on that current target that's lower, the six point six two five. You know, is it your opinion, giving that, you know, keeping that performance in mind, that that this rate of return is still reasonable to expect, even at the six point six two five?
Sure, that's a good question. I do think it's reasonable. And the reason for that, be Councilmember Mahan, obviously, we are talking about a period of the last five such years, but the 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 basis of of the assumption is a return for the long term. So even if we do not meet six point six two five in the next five years, I think the concept is that over the long term, ten, twenty years, we're going to average about six point six two five. Now, having said that, I think it's also fair to say that, again, I mentioned the boards have been moving steadily downward in in that in in the assumed rate of return. And there's always a possibility that they may continue that downward approach in the next couple of fiscal years, perhaps to six and a half or even something lower. But I don't, you know, obviously, I'm speculating because I can't speak for the board on that issue. But again, I think the main issue, the main context here is that the decision is based on a long-term expectation and that long term is not three to five years, but something more on the ten, twenty-year time span.
Got it. Yeah, I guess my concern is even if it is a ten, twenty-year time span, with the low exposure to equities, I'm finding it hard to imagine how we how we get there. But I that's something we can take offline. I'd love to learn more. I appreciate the substantive answers and I'm mindful of the rest of our agenda. So I just, I just wanted to ask the questions and just given how important this is to the entire city, our ability to deliver services and of course, our employees and retirees and our responsibilities to them. So I appreciate it and look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Councilmember Mahan, and we are thankful for the question and we're always willing to address that issue. Just one last point I'd like to make. We are increasing our our allocation to what is known as alternative investments, that they are less liquid investments, but they expect it to return a higher return than equities in the future. That is the other part of the equation where we're expecting to allow us to meet that expected rate of return. But again, we can discuss that offline further later. So thank you. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. Thank you, Councilmember Mahan. I can tell you, someone lived through a time on the council when we saw general fund contributions to pension funds quadruple, which absolutely crippled our city in terms of our ability to provide basic services. The questions you're asking are some of the most important questions that are future and our ability just to provide basic services to our residents. So this stuff does matter. I'm sorry, if I could ask everyone, please to mute their mics. Great, thank you. Yeah, I think this this is an issue which clearly the tail can wag the dog. And we've we've certainly experienced that in the past, and I appreciate your questions because it's something we have to continue to be laser focused on. I now ask if there are members of the public who'd like to speak on this item or any other item on the consent calendar so that before we take up a motion, Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I'd just like to know if there's been any kind of like like a moral or an ethical framework that decides or over investing in, like, because the Thirteenth Amendment still allows for slavery. I know there's a law that, you know, just this baffles them. But there's an exception clause in the Thirteenth Amendment. And that amendment states that you slavery is still permitted in the United States. We have not abolished slavery. Slavery is allowed with the exception for punishment for a crime and duly adjudicated within the court of law. So it stands to reason that if we've already, we've already accepted the fact that there are injustices, equity issues within the framework of the criminal justice system, then that means everything that flows from that, which is people ending up in prison, that that labor is able to be exploited. And we're actually sustaining a slave from that. But I'd like to know is if there's any portion of the fire department or the police department invested in the detention centers or in industry authority, where is this vested in? How are we getting the return? That's one piece. The second is that we have to start preparing because we haven't felt the birth pangs yet of what has happened with COVID. So within the next five to ten years, we're going to barely be experiencing economically what is happening today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman.
Hi, interesting that Paul Soto is talking about, talking on this item. Thank you. To speak on the overall consent calendar items, the items within committee minutes asking to be approved today again have Surveillance Technology and Data Collection projects. In this beginning new year, I wanted to again remind and make sure that telecom companies and local governments are being sure to practice open, honest, public policy ideas and allowing for every day community a fair amount of time to question and appeal the massive push of placing four G and five G in local community neighborhoods at this time. As it is the ideas of trust, inclusiveness, and overall good community practices that can work towards community harmony and sustainability, there is, there is also a current helplessness, apathy and hostility every day people can feel at this at this time. Is my goal for it to be understood that open public policy should be an important addition than questions of how to bridge the divide? Thank you. I have some words about Martin Luther King City Hall memorial lighting that can be read in an upcoming public record. With the upcoming flag raising ceremony for Vietnam heritage, I hope a certain acknowledgement from all sides can be given to the current Vietnamese government and their international negotiating skills that can very much help the world at this time and that I feel can naturally question the intentions of both China and the US. To again apologize, I'd like to prepare yourselves now for when I can start to better report on COVID nineteen death statistics. I hope this can help the efforts of the COVID nineteen memorial city hall lighting of one of your items today on consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to the council. May I ask for a motion on all of the items except for two point eight, two point twelve, two point nineteen? I move to approve the remaining consent calendar items. All right, there's a motion, any discussion? Let's vote.
Caminos?
Yes.
Morales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Sparza?
Yes.
Reynus?
Yes.
Oli?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Item three point one is reported to the manager, Dave. Dave, I'm sorry you're muted. I think I heard you saying there's no report, but.
I'm sorry, Mayor, trying to fiddle around here in my stuff. Yeah, sorry, no report today.
Okay, sorry for all that. Item three point three is the annual report on city services. Joe and his team have been hard at work. Welcome, Joe. I believe we have a presentation.
We do, and I think Stephanie is going to share her screen. Okay, thank you. So, good morning, afternoon, or good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, Jory City Auditor. Please present our office's thirteenth annual report on city services. This report provides performance data on the cost, quantity, timeliness, and public opinion of city services. Includes historical trends and comparisons to targets in other cities. The report is intended to be informational, and unlike other reports from our office, we do not have recommendations in this report, nor is there an administration response. We sought feedback and input from the administration during our work and included that feedback as appropriate. The report builds on the city's existing performance measurement and reporting systems. We selected and reviewed performance data to provide assurance that the information presented provides a fair picture of the city's performance. All city departments are included included in our review. However, the report is not intended to be a complete set of performance measures for all users. It provides insights into service results, but is not intended intended to thoroughly analyze results. I'm here with Stephanie Noble from my office, who was the lead on the project, as well as our whole audit team, who can hopefully answer any questions you may have, and representatives from the administration are here as well. To begin, we want to give a little context and understand who we serve as the city government. A population of over one million, San Jose is the tenth largest city in the United States and the third largest in California. The city has an ethnically diverse population, about thirty-eight percent Asian, thirty-one percent Latino or Latina, and twenty-five percent white. Roughly forty percent of San Jose residents are foreign born. More than half of residents speak a language other than English at home. In twenty nineteen, San Jose median household income increased to one hundred sixteen thousand dollars. However, the cost of living in San Jose is among the highest in the nation. Fifteen percent of San Jose households earn less than thirty-five thousand dollars. An estimated sixty-one hundred residents were homeless, according to the twenty nineteen homeless census. The city did have a challenging year in nineteen twenty with multiple emergencies affecting the community and requiring a city response. Record-breaking temperatures and dry weather required public safety power shutdowns early in the fiscal year to combat wildfires. Beginning in March twenty twenty, the COVID nineteen pandemic, of course, had an unprecedented impact on the city and continues to. Finally, in May and June of twenty twenty, the city responded to civil unrest and protests for police reform following the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. COVID nineteen caused the longest disruptions to city services and the longest active emergency response in the city's recent history. In March twenty twenty, the city issued a proclamation of local emergency as the area's caseload increased and health officials confirmed community spread. Shortly after, Santa Clara County, along with six other Bay Area communities, issued the nation's first shelter-in-place order to slow the spread of the virus and reduce stress on area hospitals. Pandemic caused economic activity to slow and the city's unemployment rate jumped from a monthly average of two point six percent pre-COVID to thirteen point eight percent in April twenty twenty. Pandemic caused a hunger crisis, with Bay Area food banks reporting a surge in requests as people lost their jobs. The pandemic also had a disproportionate impact across the community, according to data from Santa Clara County, the Latino or Latina community accounted for nearly sixty percent of COVID cases in the county. Though that community overall accounts for just twenty-six percent of county residents. The map seen on the slide shows the impact across zip codes within the city of San Jose, and this data we have here is of December twenty twenty. As a result of the emergency, the city suspended many services, activated Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, and established new services to support the emergency response. Among the efforts were expanded homeless sheltering operations and local assistance for families and small businesses, among others. The city also worked to set up a countywide distribution network of food for at-risk residents. And as described later in the presentation, many regular city services were cut back in facilities, including city hall, libraries, community centers, the annual shelter and the permit processing center were closed to the public. The support continuity of government city staff have provided services remotely. In some cases, emergency response were replaced or added to this employee's regular duties. I do want to point out the performance data we are presenting is for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, and as such, they only capture about three and a half months of COVID. Further impacts will be shown for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So twenty twenty marks San Jose's tenth year of participation in the National Community Survey. Three thousand seven hundred and fifty residents responded to the survey either by mail or online. I do want to thank the administration, all of you on the city council, as well as many of the city's nonprofit partners and other leaders in the community who helped promote the survey. We're always trying to expand the reach of the survey so we can get a larger, more representative sample for our of our residents. While nearly two-thirds of residents expected to remain in San Jose over the next five years, less than half rated the quality of life as good or excellent. Some of the highest rated characteristics for the community included shopping opportunities, overall quality of business establishments, openness and acceptance of the community, and employment opportunities. The lowest rated characteristics include the cost of living, the availability of affordable quality housing, and the cleanliness of San Jose. And although it is difficult to infer causation, it should be noted that declines in those three characteristics between twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen track closely with decline in overall ratings of the quality of life in San Jose that you see in the slide. For example, the percent positive ratings for cleanliness dropped from forty percent to twenty percent during those years, and the affordable housing measure dropped from twenty-two percent positive to a low of five percent. These, of course, are ongoing issues that the administration council has been focused on in recent years. Some changes in twenty twenty may correspond with the effects of the pandemic and shelter-in-place orders. For example, despite remaining highly rated, ratings for shopping opportunities and employment opportunities have lower ratings in twenty twenty than twenty nineteen. Alternatively, ratings for traffic flow on major streets and ease of travel by car improved in twenty twenty. Ratings for many city services were similar to prior years. Fire services, the library, the airport, and garbage collection remain among the highest rated services. And the two priority, in two top two priority issues for residents remain overall feelings of safety and economic health. Additionally, for the second year in a row, the Knight Foundation and San Jose State University participated in a parallel survey of students, faculty, and staff. Full results of both the overall survey and the San Jose State Survey are available for review within the report and online. So for additional context for the service environment of the city, the report reviews the city's financial condition and trends in citywide operating budget and staffing. Nineteen twenty, both the city's overall revenues and expenditures increased. Increased governmental revenues were primarily a result of an increase in grant revenues such as federal aid to support COVID nineteen-related expenditures and a pavement maintenance pavement maintenance grant from VTA. As a result, revenues increased, but the city's unassigned general fund balance ratio decreased. The unassigned general fund balance refers to funds that are not assigned for a specific purpose. Additionally, governmental expenses increased by eighteen percent over the last year due in part to COVID nineteen-related activities, but also increased pension and other post-employment benefit costs, street pavement maintenance, and increased garbage and recycling costs. Business-type revenues and expenses increased as well, largely due to twenty nineteen twenty being the first full year of operation of San Jose Clean Energy. Finally, the amount of money borrowed per capita increased in nineteen twenty as the city issued general obligation bonds for public improvements under Measure T, which voters passed in November twenty eighteen. You also see in the slide, San Jose continues to receive less tax revenue per capita than most of the other neighboring cities. Previous, the previous slide looked at total city revenue expenses. And if we look at the general fund, the city's primary operating fund, the story was a little different. While the city initially projected a five point one million budget surplus for nineteen twenty, the economic impact of COVID nineteen required the city to address a general fund revenue shortfall of forty-five million dollars in April twenty twenty. The shortfall was resolved through expenditure reductions and other offsetting revenue actions. Additionally, the city received state and federal grants to help fund emergency services. Increased staffing in recent years has nearly restored staffing levels to what they were ten years ago. However, some city departments remain below those levels. In some cases, the city has struggled to recover from budget and service reductions a decade ago. In other cases, the city is providing new services or has changed how services are delivered. San Jose employs about six point three people per thousand residents, fewer than any other large California city that we surveyed. Although we should note that the type and range of services may vary across jurisdictions. So the city provides a wide array of services that residents, business, and other stakeholders count on. Beginning in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, the administration selected its top six performance measures, representing achievements across the city's key lines, business or city service areas. These include community and economic development, environmental and utility services, neighborhood services, public safety, transportation, aviation services, and strategic support. We've included the CSA level performance measures in our report, and what you see in the slide can be found on our website at www.santosaca.gov/servicerport. First, we have a short demo of what you can find on our website. And I do apologize that the information on the slide is small. We just want to give an idea of what you can find on the website. We'll be going over performance highlights across the CSAs in the following slides. So first, the community and economic development CSA, you can hover over individual data points on our website, in this case, the number of affordable housing units completed. There are also historical trends and other information about the data. Each of the CSAs are included. Next, there's environmental utility services, followed by neighborhood services. And now, public safety is coming up. And again, you can hover over data points. In this case, the percent of police responses for priority one instances within six minutes. And here are the results for priority two responses. Next, we come up to strategic support. And finally, transportation and aviation services. Again, this is on our website at www.santosaca.gov/servicerport. These dashboards include fiscal year data. I believe the Budget Office plans to explore how and where they can collect more real-time data in the future for some of these measures to build a more timely dashboard. Now, I'd like to provide some additional highlights for the different service areas. So in area public safety, the Emergency Operations Center was activated three times in fiscal year nineteen twenty, including the city's response to public safety power shut offs and to COVID nineteen, which is currently ongoing. As of June twenty twenty, over two hundred and twenty city staff were activated to work within the EOC with another with two thousand additional staff providing support in some capacity. Police department received about one point two million calls for emergency and non-emergency services and responded to about two hundred and twelve thousand priority one to four calls or incidents, I'm sorry. The citywide average response time for priority one calls was seven minutes, which is above the six minute target. On average, police respond to priority two calls in twenty one minutes, which is well over their eleven minute response time target. San Jose experienced two thousand eight hundred and fifty eight major crimes for one hundred thousand residents in twenty nineteen, about the same as in twenty eighteen. San Jose's per capita crime rate remains below other major California cities such as Los Angeles, San Francisco, and Oakland, though it was slightly higher than both the state and national rates. Fire department responded to about ninety one thousand six hundred incidents in twenty nineteen twenty, including thirty seven hundred fires. Department responded to seventy five percent of priority one incidents within its time standard of eight minutes. The target is eighty percent. It's about the same as last year. The department or the prior year, I should say, the department responded ninety two percent of priority two incidents within thirteen minutes. Again, the target was eighty percent, so they hit that goal. The area of community economic development, jobs per employed resident in San Jose increased slightly in twenty nineteen to point eight five. However, it is still below the envisioned twenty forty target of one point one job per employed resident. As noted earlier, San Jose's unemployment rate jumped in twenty twenty due to the COVID pandemic. And what we're looking at here is twenty nineteen figures, so we'll see how the COVID may have affected that in the future. Number of permits center customers, field inspections, and building permits issued decreased due to the pandemic. Seventy four percent of planned checks for development projects were completed within processing time targets. Sixty seven percent of building inspections occurred within the target time of twenty four hours. The volume of construction decreased for the third straight year, however, the value of construction has increased over the last two years. In nineteen twenty, developers completed two hundred and seventeen new affordable housing units with city help, up from the hundred and eleven reported in eighteen nineteen. Availability of quality affordable housing does remain one of the lowest rated characteristics of the city, however, with seventy six percent of residents rating availability is poor, which is actually an improvement from the prior year. Transportation and aviation services, because of the reduced travel and travel restrictions associated with COVID, the number of airport passengers dropped from fourteen point nine million passengers in eighteen nineteen to eleven point three million passengers in nineteen twenty. Of those eleven point three million passengers served, ten point five million flew before March twenty twenty. The airport does remain one of the highest rated city services with seventy seven percent of residents rating. The overall ease of using the airport is good or excellent. With newly available funding from VTA Measure B, the Department of Transportation was made was able to perform preventive maintenance on local and neighborhood streets in twenty nineteen, the first time in eight years. Measure T funds will further support street pavement repair. The street, the city's street pavement condition is rated fair on the pavement condition index rating scale by the MTC, though the score did increase slightly from the prior year. The fatal and injury crash rate rose slightly to two point four per thousand residents in twenty nineteen. It does remain below the national rate, though, which was five point nine in twenty eighteen. Twenty nineteen twenty marked the first full fiscal year that San Jose Clean Energy provided businesses and residents with options for renewable and carbon-free energy. San Jose Clean Energy served over three hundred and twenty nine thousand accounts and stayed within its target opt-out rate of five percent. The city has a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions to less than three point six six million metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent by twenty thirty. And San Jose Clean Energy can help the city meet those goals. The percent of waste diverted from landfills increased slightly from last year, even though the city has been working to address disruptions in the recyclables market. City diverted sixty six percent of solid waste in twenty nineteen, which means prevented waste from going to landfills to recycling, reuse, or composting. The city delivered nearly four billion gallons of recycled water, and the city continues to meet its target for the number of sanitary sewer overflows in the sanitary sewer system. Parks Recreation Neighborhood Service Department or PRNS added three new parks in twenty nineteen twenty, Iris Chang Park, Rincon South Park, and the Arcadian Ballpark. Overall, PRNS rated park condition a three point four out of five point scale. Due to COVID, PRNS closed many of its recreation facilities and programs, including Happy Hollow Park and Zoo, community centers, and certain park amenities. As a result, overall participation in recreation programs decreased, and direct program revenues covered just thirty percent of costs below the target of forty percent. Resident satisfaction with the city's parks and recreational opportunities decreased as well. Again, not surprising because of the effects of COVID. Library hours, circulation, and program participation also decreased due to COVID. In nineteen twenty, the library had four million visitors, down two million from the prior year. During the pandemic, the library transitioned services to allow express pickup of library materials through online or phone reservation. Though circulation dropped from seven point eight million to seven from in twenty eighteen nineteen to seven million in nineteen twenty. Seventy eight percent of residents rated library services good or better, the same as last year. The city's Animal Care Center also closed to the public because of COVID. In nineteen twenty, the center sheltered over fourteen thousand animals, down from about seventeen thousand the prior year. The center did maintain its library lease rate of ninety one percent, which has held steady from the prior year. The Information Technology Department or IT reports eighty six percent of its nineteen twenty projects met scheduling, cost, scope, and value goals exceeding its target of eighty percent. IT also helped transition the city to a remote work environment during COVID nineteen, facilitating an increase of over eight hundred users on the city's secure access servers and more than seventy thousand monthly teleconferencing hours. Ninety seven percent of general vehicles in the city's fleet were available when needed, as were one hundred percent of emergency vehicles, the same as the prior year. Public Works managed the city's fleet. The city has maintained strong general obligation bond ratings by the three leading national rating agencies, Moody's, Standard, Porzingis, and Fitch. Finance Department managed over two billion dollars in city cash and investments and procured over a hundred and ninety million dollars in products and services, including some associated with COVID nineteen, such as personal protective equipment. So additional copies of the report are available from the Otter's Office and posted on our website at www.santosaca.gov/servicerport. We thank the many departments that contributed to the report. This report would not be possible without their support. We also like to thank the Knight Foundation, San Jose State University for their continued interest and participation in our resident survey, and of course, all the residents who took part in the survey. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Joe, and thanks for all the hard work of your team on this very extensive report. Let's go to the public and we'll come back to the council. Mr. Soto.
Yes, thank you, Mary, and I second what you were stating about how comprehensive and how much work went into articulating and detailing all the different types of services and all the different types of issues that we contend with as citizens in our city. What I zeroed in on and focused on was, of course, the income. I mean, that that is alarming, that thirty five thousand, and what we have here is the COVID issues being articulated right in front of us with these numbers. People are only making this amount of money on the county level. On the county level last year, forty nine percent of the residents in Santa Clara County make under sixty thousand dollars a year. Okay, so this is why people are living in close proximity with each other. Okay, which in turn has created the conditions by which COVID is able to run rampant through our communities. And so to look at this information and not really see how generationally the equity issues with respect to income, with respect to social and economic viability in this county is evidenced in these numbers. It's just whether people talk a lot about, you know, I'm a, you know, I'm a data kind of person, you know, I just like the data. But you have to be able to interpret data correctly, you know, and that sometimes becomes very subjective. You know, so you can have all the data in the world, but if you do not approach the data in the interpretation and the articulation of what that data really actually means and says, then you have an incomplete picture of what's going on in the city. I think the information is there. I think we just have to have the fortitude to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thank you for this item. It seems like an interesting report. I hope I can read it more thoroughly and learn things from it. You had issues about or items about community energy. You know, I have gone through a lot with, you know, you had an item a few months ago about or weeks ago, months ago about backup generators and the use of hydrogen fuel cells for for backup generator use. And that really set off kind of a chain reaction for myself in thinking about issues and really brought up the idea of the importance in however you've been planning, however you plan your community energy future, you always have to include the ideas of natural disaster, like wildfires, like possibility of earthquake. And that really hit home to me, and it hadn't hit home to me before the way it did. And so, you know, I'm preparing my life around that. I plan to try to talk about those issues more. I've written yourselves a bunch of letters in my work that I'm doing with community energy in East Bay. And they come up with some surprising graphics that I've described to you in my letters that I hope I can get some answers from. I don't want to go, you know, crazy on what they've described. I want to do it, you know, very formally. But it was surprising information, and I invite everyone to read into it. It's their October EBCE reports, IR, IPR reports, item nineteen of their of their Board of Directors, EBCE meetings. Interesting work. Yeah, it's kind of community energy describing what to expect in our lives for the next ten years, and I hope I can do that well myself. Thank you.
Thank you. The person's phone number ending five one four zero.
Yeah, he's got a lot cut out for you. Budget wise, you know, we're paying Eddie, what, a thousand bucks a day to go work in Dallas right now? Real nice. Yeah, you're not going to have enough money to pay off all these people in your in your budget. Not going to happen. You got to get these businesses open. Still not going to happen. But I know we're renaming streets and not fixing them. That's one thing I know that's happening. The one thing in the report that's a lie is that they're one minute off for response time. How about an hour off? How about two hours off? The EM, the police and fire of this town are a disgrace. They should hang their head in shame. They don't respond to calls, and when they do, they show up with a bad attitude, if they show up at all. This this city needs to be cleaned up with its pension and everything else. You guys are, you you guys are the probably the saddest city in the world. You know, I used to live in Reno. Reno is better than San Jose. That's how terrible this town is. And now you got Eddie off making all this money. He's going to Dallas. This is all fine and dandy. How many of these other people retire with fat salaries and go work someplace else? I mean, San Jose is just a gold mine for for these emergency, for these first responders. I call them last responders. And as for fuel backup, I can't wait to see what you guys have in store for fuel backup. It's gonna be awesome, I'm sure. I mean, when the power goes out here, it's uh, it's like New York in the, it'll be like New York in the seventies. It'll be terrible. You guys should be ashamed of yourself. Everyone on that city council, even the people I like, and including you, Sam, you guys should all be ashamed of yourself of how you run this city. I hope you have backup generators and this, you know, mystery unicorn micro grids and everything. I hope you can at least.
Thank you. Returning to the council. All right, questions from Councilmember Mayhem.
Thanks, Mayor. I, for the record, I have family in Reno. I'm very proud to be a resident of San Jose. I think we're doing a great job here. So on the, on the report, Joe, thanks. Thanks for all the time you and your team put in on this. I really enjoy going through this report every year, and I apologize to my colleagues for pausing on this for a few minutes here, but I, you know, I've thought a lot in my career and, you know, building a company about how to basically use data to analyze performance and optimize performance and build feedback loops. And I wanted to just comment on that and ask a couple of questions so that, you know, I I took the report and I actually printed it out, sat on the couch, went through it. I don't know how many of your readers do that, Joe, but I enjoyed it. And went back to the operating budget, which also has performance metrics, and then came across the city manager's enterprise level priorities, which were really interesting. And between the three, it felt to me like we had the building blocks of what you might call a performance management system. And what I mean by that is goals that are tied to real-world outcomes that we're all working to achieve for our community. Tracking of our performance and regular reporting and analysis of how we're doing, and then turning that into a feedback loop that improves how we're performing, allows us to make hypotheses about what we might do better to to improve our performance, to better achieve the outcomes we want to achieve for the community. So it seems to me the building blocks are there, but as I go through this report, and and then, of course, the the operating budget with its performance metrics, I have a hard time telling to what extent that system and that kind of feedback loop is actually operating. And there were three things I wanted to just point out, and then I'll get to my question. So one is, while this report's incredibly information-rich and it's presented really nicely, it doesn't feel to me like there's clear prioritization of which metrics matter most, which which are the proxies, the best proxies for the value that we're delivering to the community, i.e. the outcomes that we want to see. And it feels like we benefit from elevating one or maybe two or three, but certainly not more than that in terms of each functional area, each department, or maybe for each of those enterprise priorities that the city manager has, the the best proxy of the outcome that we want, and really making those front and center and consistent across the budget, which is certainly a reflection of our priorities. And then this analysis. Because currently, the report combines staffing data and output data and outcome data. It's very hard to know what what actually matters. Second point was really about what are we learning? And that also wasn't really clear to me. There were some very interesting insights. I was stuck in particular on the eleven X multiplier on every dollar we put into economic development. I'm sure there would be diminishing returns if we increased that too much, but pretty interesting that for every dollar we invest in economic development, we're generating eleven on the other side. But the question sort of like, so what? I mean, we've got all this data, but how is it informing our strategy? Are we, should we be shifting resources? Are we changing our delivery approach? I assume at the departmental level that may be happening, but it it isn't very transparent to me, and I assume the public, what we're actually doing. I think the risk in terms of our city staff is that, you know, in my experience, performance data, if it's if it's tied to a strategy and there's a learning cycle and we're constantly reflecting and improving what we're doing, it can be super empowering and motivating, and if we're not, and we're just kind of always at eighty percent of goal and not really clear if it matters or what we're doing differently, I think it can actually have the opposite. It can actually be de-motivating. So I wanted to just call that out. And then my third comment, and then I promise I'll get to my questions, is just about the the regularity and the the structure of the reporting itself. I feel like we're in a world that's moved beyond big annual reports, and I know you highlighted the dashboards, which is great, but I guess I'm curious to understand how close we are to being able to report data continuously. I saw this amazing example, actually, right here in San Jose from our fire department. Chief Safian, this past week, walked my team and me through the dashboards he's using to track real time data, that's performance data that's tied to clear outcomes, and then actually intervene where necessary or or flag things that aren't working and try to respond in real time to improve how that department is performing to ultimately make our community safer. And I thought it was really inspiring, and I, but it doesn't, it isn't clear to me from these kinds of top level reports that we're consuming at the council level to what extent that feedback cycle is happening regularly and is tied to the sort of city-level goals coming from our city manager and presumably approved by council. So I'm trying to wrap my head around how we're how we're managing performance and how we're driving toward the outcomes for our for our community. So I, and I apologize, I was long-winded. I just, I think it's a really important topic, and there's a lot of potential here. And while the report's great, I think we're actually leaving, we may be leaving a lot of value on the table. So to get to my questions, I guess, first question might actually be more for Dave, our city manager. I'm, you know, curious to what extent what I just said resonates, where you think we are in that process, and maybe specifically. in that process and maybe specifically, do we have clear citywide goals that this kind of report should be responsive to, if that makes sense?
Yeah, so certainly appreciate the question. And, you know, you and I talked a little bit here, I don't know if it was yesterday, it was recently. It's been a little bit of a whirlwind recently. So, you know, maybe I could start by just talking about the enterprise priorities. And I think most of the council know this. You know, we came up with the enterprise priorities, really try to make sense out of all the work that we have as a city and all the priorities that the council sets and in particular focusing on those items that really cross departmental lines. Because I think by and large, the work that resides within departments, we have a tremendous amount of performance measures that, you know, manage that work and, and some of that reports up through the budget, not all of it. There's a lot of performance measures that go on within the departments that doesn't get reported up. But there are these, these major initiatives that we have going on that cross department lines that, and when I interviewed for this job, actually, I brought those forwards. I didn't call them enterprise priorities. You know, smarter people than me have helped me kind of come up with that name. And there weren't eight of them at the time, there were seven of them. And since, you know, we've, as a staff, have worked to, to evolve them, to really, and keep in mind, this is not to set the direction for the city. That's what you all do. It was to make sense out of what we were being told and try to set up a framework for how we would manage across department lines to ensure that work gets done and to focus the departments that this is where the manager's office is going to be focused on, these eight priorities, because they're so important to our community. I know I'm kind of long-winded here, more than normal. The next phase for us was to build performance measurements around those enterprise priorities that, and we never got to that, you know, just not one to hide behind a pandemic, but the pandemic hit and derailed us. And now we are working under, especially in the early days of the pandemic, an entirely different set of priorities. And then over time here, over the past several months, we've now, I think, attempted to weave back in the enterprise priorities as we kind of work in these two realms, the COVID emergency response realm and the realm of doing all the other work outside of COVID. So yes, I think what you're talking about, councilmember, in terms of top-line, you know, enterprise-wide performance-type measures is the right way to go. And we were definitely on that track and I think are eager to get back on that track so that, because I think that alignment will really help the organization focus on what's most important. I will remind you all that we have a study session coming up at the end of February where we're going to talk about our roadmap. And I think that's a big part of this discussion. Hopefully, we're going to get to a place where we can all agree, what are the top priorities of the city? Because we are so lean that we can't just have everything as a top priority. So hopefully that helps a little bit with context.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. I think it does. And I think you, in overseeing the operation of the city, deserve from us as, you know, as a council and was effectively at like Board of Directors almost, clear direction on what matters most. And so I guess my, my follow-up question, I'm glad to hear we're moving in that direction. Do you feel like you have the tools and the frameworks to push us to give you that direction and to start to codify goals that are reflective of, and prioritize goals that are reflective of the outcomes we care about in the community? Because I get that there are trade-offs. I mean, there's no, there's no free lunch here. We can't prioritize everything, but, but you deserve to know from us in some sort of stack ranking, what, what outcomes are most important.
Yeah, I think this, this council, this mayor, you have all, I'll just say this, you know, I'm connected with all the city managers across the country. You know, our council historically has been very good about, you know, working with this on a prioritization process for policy work, which many other cities don't have. It's just everything comes to the staff and they're expected to do everything. And so I think in that way, we've been pretty blessed over the years that, that the mayor and the council have been willing to kind of go through that process. And, and I think, you know, the roadmap study session that we have coming up is, I think that's, that's what, yeah, that's what we need. We need that direction from you all. And I know it's tough to kind of prioritize, all these things are so important, but I would say yes to your question.
Okay, great. And then just to, and I'll wrap it up with this, but just to bring it down one level from the outcomes we want to the, to back to the audit, to the audit report and the assessment of performance, if we set those clear goals, is it the responsibility of the audit function or some other function within the city to help us build what I was calling that, that learning cycle, where we're analyzing how we're performing and someone, or maybe many different people are providing some insight or some, at least hypotheses into how we improve performance to better achieve outcomes? Where, where does that live? I'm not, I don't see that in most of our, really anywhere written down. And so I'm curious, how does strategy evolve in sort of real time or on some tighter cycle as we're getting performance data and it's being analyzed?
Yeah, and I think, you know, often it's at the programmatic level. It certainly is. And, and at the, you know, department level, you know, not all of that gets reported up through the council or to the council. You know, I think the, the relationship that the administration has with, with the city auditor is a, is a very productive relationship. Obviously, the city auditor is independent from the administration and that, that strategy, I think, has served the city well for many, many years. We don't necessarily just rely on the auditor to kind of, to help us manage, of course, but that independence has, has helped us many, many times. And then certainly with the annual report, I think it is probably, and it was brought on years ago by Sharon, the first time we kind of had that holistic kind of across the entire organization type performance audit review. So a lot of value there. But to answer your question, you know, there is, there is a lot of performance information and data and decision-making that goes on within the organization that we do not necessarily report up through to the council. You know, and that's, that's just, you know, the size of the organization and, and obviously, you know, just the fact that we've got so much work going on that really depending on the department heads to make sure they're managing their work.
If I could jump in and add real quick, I'm sorry, councilmember. So as Dave said, so this, this report is a kind of a broad look at, at kind of this performance across the city. One other role for offices, obviously, the performance audit, when we go deeper into at the program level, and we will often have recommendations about gathering data, using data. I'm just thinking of some audits that just came out within the last year. We had a series of recommendations in our fleet audit related to the use of data to, to inform decision-making at the program level. Same thing with the parks audit, park maintenance audit. So at the, at those, when we do our performance audits of specific programs within departments, we'll often have recommendations in those areas. Yeah.
Yeah, and I've seen those. Those, those are great. I think that's great. I, I think, so this is really, this is helpful. I appreciate it. I think, you know, my opinion at least is that it would be great, David, the level of the city, if the council were able to work with you to understand those enterprise priorities, how we're measuring the outcomes and be privy to at least the strategic considerations at that level. I don't think council should be micromanaging the programmatic level at all, just to be clear. We've hired, I mean, we've hired amazing people, as has become very clear to me, as I've gone around meeting all of our department heads. I just, I think at the council level, it'd be nice for us to have insight into the strategic decisions and trade-offs that are being made and what data is informing and what analysis is informing those trade-offs so that we can weigh in and at least have that context. But it sounds like we, there's kind of alignment and moving in that direction, which is great. So I'm really looking forward to the study session and appreciate both of your comments. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
John Ciccarelli had his hand up. I'm not sure to respond to something that Councilmember Mayhem asked about. Is that right? Okay, it might be just by accident.
Sorry, Mayor, it was by accident, sorry.
Oh, there you are. Okay, all good.
Get that hand down.
All right. We're watching, John. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. And I want to thank Councilmember Mayhem for his questions and comments. It's very, very similar to my line of questioning as a first-year councilmember. So I, it's fun to, fun to hear that and revisit it and see where, how we've changed over time. And that's not a dig at all. I'm just, it's, I'm, it's nice to have someone who thinks like me on the council, so thank you.
Sure, I have a lot to learn, but thank you.
No, no, it's good because I was, I was like, as I was hearing, I was thinking, okay, how is Dave going to respond to this and how, versus how he did four years ago? So I, and we have come farther, as, as Dave pointed out, and I do appreciate, Dave, your comments about, about the roadmap and the need for prioritization. I know we've talked about that a little bit prior to the holidays. We talked about returning to services. And to that end, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. And I know we'll get a chance to talk more about this, as you said, at the study session, but there, really in the community and economic development, I think we will have to be talking a lot about that going forward. And this is something that is not, is not new. Dave, you and I have talked about this with, with the need for economic recovery. There were a few of the items, and I don't want to knock too much on, on 1920, because we did have, obviously, a lot to contend with, but I was, I was wondering, when I'm looking on page 40, and this is just the community economic development dashboard, the CSA dashboard, looking at the percent of projects that receive consistent feedback from staff throughout the course of project review. So this is looking at development. The targets are, there are.
Okay, yeah, well, Stephanie. Hello? Mike.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Sparsen, there you go. Thank you.
And Councilmember Arenas, I think is.
Okay.
There were a few items where it looks like the target, we were having trouble meeting the target even before 1920. And then again, with development projects completed within processing time targets, a couple of those where we're having trouble, we were having trouble meeting those even in previous years. And so I just want to put, put a fine point on that, that when we're talking about the need to recover our economy and the fact that we've got development projects being hung up by building inspector inconsistencies, so targets not being met with consistency, and then inspections and plan checks, we're not, we haven't been meeting those targets in previous years. And the, the dire need to meet those targets as we're trying to restart our economy, I just, those were the ones that really jumped out at me that we, we're going to have to pay attention to. And again, it's just really getting out of the way as, as we try to, you know, we see, we see our, our jobs to employed resident ratio is .85. Our goal has always been at least 1.1 or higher. Having trouble meeting that and then knowing that we've had this, this huge unemployment just kind of hit us in this last year. So I just wanted to point those out and just to, again, I'm not going to knock on us not having met targets for 1920 if it hasn't been a pattern already. And those were already patterns. And I'm, I've just, I continue to be concerned about our readiness to help with economic And that's, that's all I've got. I don't have a question or anything. I just want to make that comment.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Dave, did you want to respond before I move on?
Just, no point well taken and appreciate the comment, yep.
Okay. Councilmember Sparsen?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions and one is for Karen us. There was an item here that talked about facility direct program revenue and park conditions and resident satisfaction with city parks and recreation services. And I wanted to ask specifically, is this feedback going to be incorporated into the bond polling for the park bond in 2022 so that we can make sure that we take the data that we're getting from residents and that we address that?
John Ciccarelli, Director of Parks Recreation and services. Thanks for the question. It definitely informs how we poll. I don't know, I don't do the polling. Lee Wilcox manages that and I don't know that he's on other areas.
Oh, there he is.
But, but we do look at how people respond and say they really like something or really want something, and then we, then, then we ask them in the polling, is that the case? So we've, in the, when we did prior polling, we were asking about all kinds of things. Could be senior services, could be gang services, you know, as well as things like park maintenance and buildings and stuff like that. So we sort of, if I'm describing this right, we sort of start with a scattershot and then work your way down towards what are, what are people seeming to gravitate towards in terms of their support? Lee, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Can't hear you.
Nope, still, still can't hear you, Lee.
Hear me okay now?
Yes.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, the initial polling we do starts really broadly. So we take kind of the needs of the department or a number of departments and start as broadly as we can. So we've done that a few different times on some of the parks measures and have tried to narrow it to a second poll. But unfortunately, as of, you know, the, the polling in 2018 and 2019 didn't get to the numbers where we would see narrowing around priorities would get over a threshold that would mean to can bring that to consideration for the council.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm looking forward to 2022 and until we can do some more polling and get some help for our parks. I had another question on the public safety dashboard. I don't know if you can pull that up. They're not numbered and I'm looking at a hard copy. Can someone pull up the public safety dashboard, please?
We are working on it.
Okay, so I, I wanted to, it's pretty stark. Thank you, Stephanie. And so it's pretty stark in terms of the police districts. I want to pull something up before I get to my, to my question. So if they could, it's a big public safety slide.
Yeah, scrolling down.
And there's not a page number on, on the hard copy, so I.
There you go.
I'm, I'm actually looking at the big blue one that was in the presentation. In the presentation, do you have the blue one from the presentation? So basically, I'll start off with a question to Chief Tyndall. So District Lincoln is that blue map that shows, there we go. There we go. So all of District Lincoln is in City Council District 7. District 7 also has parts of SAM and Charles and X-ray, but as you can see, it's the city's busiest police district. And there are some things that Chief Garcia did to stop making it a training district so that we could reduce response times. But one of the things that the city is looking at is redistricting for this police district. Can you talk about the status of that and what that could do to reduce this, this intensity of calls that are just really in the heart of the city and the number of resources that impacts, impacts redistricting?
Good afternoon, Acting Chief of Police Dave Tyndall, and thank you for the question, councilmember. So yes, as you are well aware, District Lincoln is in our Western Division, which wholly resides in District 7. As you also know, we've been looking at many, many different ways and how to respond to calls for service in there. When you look at the actual calls for service, District Lincoln can sometimes be upwards of double the amount of calls for service. District Lincoln can sometimes be upwards of double the amount of calls for service, both priority ones, twos, threes, and fours and every and any other part of the city. As a temporary measure, we added more staff. But as we continue to look at adding more staff, when we start looking at our span of control of officers to sergeants and supervision, it became acutely apparent that we need to look at not only redistricting and splitting this most likely into another district and or kind of pairing it out with other districts in the general area around there. The need was was very apparent. You know, we have a lot of different districts from that are geographically large, which attributes to quite a bit of the delay in response times when you look at it. But District Lincoln is purely a call for service.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And Stephanie, if you could keep the presentation up and go to the next slide, the next public safety slide, which is the red one with the thank you with the fire stations. I saw Chief Sapien and wanted to ask either him or, you know, I'm not quite sure, but probably Chief Sapien. So Station twenty six and sixteen are in District Seven, and we have some fire stations in the works. Will that relieve, I mean, Station twenty six on Tully Road is is by far the busiest fire station in the city. Will the new fire stations relieve some of that pressure on twenty six and also three, which is in Councilmember Paralisis's district?
Hi, Councilmember Robert Sapien. Thank you for the question. And the 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 very straightforward answer to your question is absolutely. The three stations that will be added to the city's footprint are thirty seven, which is essentially on the western edge of Station twenty six's response area. Station thirty two, which is on the northeastern edge of Station twenty six's area, and Station thirty six, which is on the southeastern border of Station twenty six's area. And so those placements were determined by travel distance challenges, by call volume challenges, and by response time metrics. And so every one of those stations will will result in better coverage for that general area and absolutely a reduction in call volume for Station twenty six.
Thank you, Chief. And one more question. I'm not sure if this is for you or for Dave Sykes or someone else, but looking at that graph, you can see how many of those calls are medical calls. And I'm I'm sure we can talk about that in the sort of macro. But in the micro, there are some things that can contribute to the high number of medical calls. And I'll speak for myself in District Seven. And, for example, at Home First, there were almost twelve hundred calls for service at the shelter, and a lot of those were medical calls from fire. And are we having those discussions with the county about placing medical care on sites such as permanent supportive housing developments, shelters, and other sites that receive a high volume of medical calls so that we don't have to put the people who need help through that, and we don't have to put the residents who have to wait longer to have someone respond to their heart attack through that?
So this is Jackie Morales Fran from the Housing Department kind of jumping in. And for our permanent supportive housing developments, we do have, and we do partner with providing health services, and especially when a development first opens, when we've noticed there have been increased calls for services. We've tried to brainstorm and tried to bring additional services to try to address that. Some of the challenges have been on the permanent supportive housing side is that people have used, people who live on the streets have used the three one one or nine one one to obtain medical services. And the challenge has been, even when people move in, sometimes, you know, takes an adjustment period before there they understand the types of services and the resources that are available on site. And so I know it has been something that we've put some focus on on the permanent supportive housing side, on really trying to focus on those calls and trying to really shift people's behavior towards utilizing services that are on site. So we are keeping logs to try to identify who's calling and providing it again, additional outreach and services. And on the shelter side, I am not completely sure that we have done much there. But I'm going to see if Reagan, I know, was on the line earlier, and if she has any additional information, she can jump in.
There may be a connection issue. Reagan, we're not able to hear your hear you if you are talking. Jackie, maybe we should.
Yes, she may not be on then.
Yep.
So how often do you track? So do you do you track or are the permanent supportive housing developments tracking tracking the logs?
The permanent supportive housing groups are are tracking, are keeping logs to determine who's making the calls and to try to decrease those calls into their buildings.
Sure. And and I mean, I'll share from my experience. That's happening at one location in my district. So the county's largest permanent supportive housing development opened on Central Road a year ago. We've had great communication. And the partners all sit down and talk, and I think that's frankly a best practice to keep to communicate and keep an eye on issues and resources. But, you know, like I said, I I I know that fire has been relied on for medical services, and using Renaissance Place as an example, the county was supposed to have an onsite clinic and never did. And so because we had good communication with the partners, we noticed a big bump in medical calls. And so worked with the county to bring in behavioral health specialists, but also really have had to try and work through making sure that there are medical services available on site. Because sometimes it's a combination of both, and I'll tell you, another thing that has emerged is calling nine one one instead of providing a taxi voucher to folks that need a ride to VMC. And so anyway, I wanted to ask that because there are very real repercussions in the neighborhood and as well as for the residents of some of the developments who have high needs and a lot of health, you know, issues and are often seniors themselves and need that medical care. And so I look forward to having these discussions more in the future. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Paulson?
Yeah, thank you very much. And just want to echo the appreciation of the report as well. Always enlightening to to be able to to take a look at these survey results. And I want to say impressed by our freshman council member, Matt Mahon, as well as Councilmember Davis highlighted, I think, in his review of it. And and I think he mentioned that this was not the first time that he'd looked it over. So being his first year on the council, appreciate that he's taken a look at this in in years past. And also appreciate Paul Soto's statement regarding how data can be objective, but the interpretation of it can be subjective and and how he himself read through some of, I think, the indicators specifically in relation to to income in the poverty levels, really, of and the disparity of income in this in this area. One of the things that in regards to the to the the data itself, I wanted to 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 ask a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the number of respondents of the survey from this year. And it shows thirty seven fifty, three thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then I took a look back at some of the other years. Last year, we had forty three eighty eight. The year before, we had thirty six eighty eight. And and then it it went really low in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen at only eight eighteen hundred and eighty eight respondents. Not certain what the eighty eight, three years in a row was about, but that's what we had. And then twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, we had thirty seven twenty two, three thousand seven hundred and twenty two. So kind of that thirty seven hundred seems to be a decent average. And then twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, which was the fifth year, I believe, that we had done this survey, we only had five hundred and five. Now I stopped searching after that, so maybe they 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 go down. But it was it was extremely low at that point. And so I I had a question, a couple of questions in regards to that. One, just to kind of see, you know, the the responses that we're trying to achieve. It looks like we've we've hit around again that thirty seven hundred, which is exactly what we've hit this year. So I think, you know, favorable response rate, what are we trying to to hit in in that regards?
It's a great question. So if I just want to take and go back a few years. So when you go back to those years, when you mentioned about five hundred something, that was prior, that was the years we only did the mail survey. And so we introduced the the online portion a few years back. We also expanded the number of mailings we sent out. So that was the increase from about five hundred something into the seventeen hundred or ever eighteen hundred, and then it went up to the thirty seven. So we have expanded the 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 number that have been mailed out and really expanded our efforts to get the word out in the community in recent years. And so we we changed it up a little bit. This this past year was the first year we offered simplified Chinese translation. In terms of what our goal is, you know, it's just we keep trying to get more and more is really what it is. You know, we're just thinking, we were just talking the other day about, do we want to expand the mail portion in to beef up kind of the 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 random portion of it? And then at the same time, trying to keep increasing our advertising around or getting the word out on the online portion. It did go down from last year, and part of that, again, we can't can't point to one thing. But the one area that did drop off is in past years, we had a lot of help from the PRS and library, Work to Future. They put flyers in libraries and community centers, wherever. Obviously, those are all closed, and so we didn't have that avenue this year. We did have, you know, we worked with the 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 city manager's office to to get a press release out. We worked with the Office of Racial Equity to get a list of community leaders, and we reached out to them, and they pushed out their their list. So we're always trying to get more and more because we are concerned about, you know, the the response is not coming from representative group. There are, there is response bias. It's a long survey. And so we're trying to minimize that as much as possible, getting as many people involved as possible. In turn, the long term goals, again, I guess, I don't have a specific number that I'm shooting for. I just want to keep keep getting more and more people involved and also getting a wider selection of people involved. Like I said, this was the first year we had simplified Chinese as a as a as a option in in just trying to reach parts of the community that might not have been represented in the past. Surveying is hard. Response bias is real. We generally have a in an older, wider population that are generally homeowners that respond. And the survey folks, they reweight the information, reweight their surveys to or weight their responses to reflect the demographics in the community. But the more we can get the word out, the more people can get involved, you know, the better, the better off we are. So that's, you know, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, so we don't have a target, and we're trying to hit.
In terms of number of responses?
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Okay, I I think you know, certainly, again, this kind of went back to the comment, the public comment from Paul Soto on, you know, we take the the data as as maybe objective and interpret it subjectively. But I think at the same time, we have to recognize the objective data is coming from point three percent of the population, and it's whoever decided to to fill out the survey, right? So I think it's valuable, but we can't jump to, I think, extreme conclusions, right? In regards to what we're what we're hearing or seeing or reading here because of just knowing simply the fact that that, you know, the the pool of of individuals that we're getting the data from could in and of itself be skewed simply by the means that we're we're achieving the data. As you point out, you know, when we went from just mail to doing digital, the numbers jumped dramatically, right, in the thousand, which I think is great. But we're we're likely still missing, I think, certain segments and demographics of our of our populations.
Absolutely, I agree. And I think the way that we use the the survey results often is is are we seeing, what are the what are the results in the survey? Do they make sense relative to the data that we're 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 seeing elsewhere? You know, I I point out on this on this chart, the the lowest rated cert character, community characteristics, cost of living in San Jose. And that objectively makes sense, you know, cleanliness of San Jose also is down there. And again, I tried to point out that it was it was really drops in some of those ratings. We've really tracked closely with the drops in the quality of life. Now, whether the number is, you know, forty, you know, whether the number, whatever the number is, it seemed to make sense relative to what we were observing within in other in other parts of the report. So it's one piece of it. And again, I think one of the one of the things that that we're proud of in this report is is showing information in different ways. So you are getting the 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 performance data. You're balancing that with the survey data, and you're balancing that with kind of the workload data. So you have an understanding of the context. And so it's one piece of the one piece of of the puzzle. And but your point is absolutely fair. And we're, you know, we don't have a specific number we're shooting for, but we're trying to get the word out as much as we can to as many people in the community. Because that we we think that's the best way to try to get, you know, that 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 broader perspective. And we're trying, I mean, we're we're trying to do better every year, and we're continuing, we'll we'll look, we'll debrief at the end of this project and figure out what might work better, how can we reach into into different parts of the community. And we welcome any input that you all have in helping us get there.
Yeah, I'll now give you some now.
Okay.
And look, I'm not knocking you with the word job. I I think this is a tremendous report. I just I I see some opportunities here. And and I think that when I when I'm trying to to gather, you know, a a real, I think, outlook on on some of the concerns that we should be focused on. I actually really appreciate the, again, that the 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 report in its whole. This is just one area where I think, you know, trying to get that that input from our community members is is important. And so I was just, you know, kind of comparing what we've seen in the past and and then looking where we're going. And so I think I think this this is a easy question. But the last report that showed that you did the survey in both Vietnamese and Spanish was twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. That's the last time you wrote it or it showed up written in the report. I'm assuming it's it's been done that way every year. And then you mentioned this year, we even added Chinese, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I may, I just would recommend that we we reinclude that. It's a just a one sentence that was in the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen report that said that, you know, the the survey was done in these languages. Okay. And then I think we should maybe strive for a percentage goal. We're we're hovering around, you know, just under point three percent. You know, maybe it's half a percent that we strive for, or maybe it's a one percent. Maybe we're we're hoping for, you know, ten thousand or some respondents, I don't know, but I think.
It's funny you mention the ten thousand. That's what I've said in my in in private to to staff, just because. But, you know, we, like you said, we're hovering around that three thousand or thirty seven hundred, four thousand, and we're we're inching slowly north.
Well, now you've said it public, so it's a goal. So we'll we'll call it that. But I I think it would be good that, you know, just to kind of have have a goal like that 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 tries to see it. But I think there's a way that I would really like to get there. And and one of the ways would be, let's try to see if we couldn't get there by maybe just thinking a little bit more outside the box creatively and ensuring that we are maybe, you know, touching some communities that that are not necessarily traditionally included in the in the survey, those that may have a more difficult time. You know, and and. You know, and and I think, you know, we've obviously got our our new office of race inequity. And I don't think it's going to be the goal of any of us in the council to throw all sorts of new things at that office. For these next few months, we're probably going to be doing just that. So I think, you know, that's that's a place to start, at least next year. And then in the the subsequent years, I think, maybe work in partnership and see how do we achieve a little bit more, you know, diverse opinion on some of this this input. And 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 I actually don't necessarily think we're going to come up with some sort of dramatic, you know, difference in the results. Because I would agree with you, looking at the results that we see on our screen right now. Things like the cost of living, you know, being the the least favorable indicator. I I don't think that's going to change, right? I you know, so I don't, I don't necessarily think some of those things are going to, you know, the the cleanliness, right? And I think we can, there's a ton to take from this entire report where it can help us, you know, make some policy and priority decisions moving forward, where we know time and again, and unfortunately, where we see that chart that we're looking at the at the left on the the quality of of life indicators, right? That this plans to remain in San Jose, recommend living in San Jose. Those are, those are not, you know, favorable. They're 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 embarrassing for an elected official, right? A leader in San Jose that someone that looks at that and says, wow, this is how people living here feel about the city. You know, and and so, you know, I think that, again, appreciate it, just some some bit of recommendations going forward. I'll I'll end on a different topic, which is in relation to what Councilmember, as far as I said, she just sparked interest. I would agree, the strain that we've seen, you know, on our city services like police and fire. You know, we see that all over, but it it is definitely inequitable throughout the city. I am, you know, going to be hopefully striving that we can reintroduce in the budget this year, the redistricting for the police department. I think we we need to do that. We had that last year, but we had to cut it out. I think that can can help tremendously. And then maybe offline councilmembers, as far as and I have to check in, because we were having the same issue with Second Street Studios in regards to the county had intended to have a clinic, a full service clinic and and did not. And then now what we have are a rise in calls for service to Second Street Studios. And so if Renaissance Place is having the same thing. I think that's something we don't want to see repeated as we build more permanent supportive housing throughout the city. So I think we we need to get on top of that before it becomes a bigger issue. Thanks.
I think that's a great topic to for to our next county joint city county meeting. Councilman Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick questions. One is related to something on page thirty one, which is under the financial condition topic. It's specifically related to the the left side of the page. It says capital assets and spending and spending. And then it goes into the infrastructure backlog. And then specifically, if you look down on the on the table there, it talks about the backlog. All funds as of January twenty twenty, the transportation and infrastructure. It talks about the, it mentions the number twenty three point seven million for ongoing need. And so I was focusing on the other number, current backlog deferred needs eight hundred and seventy one million. What I'm curious about, how does that sort of tie into some of the work we've been doing under measure T? And and is that number sort of taking into account all the great work that DOT has been doing or? And I'm not, I I don't know if someone from DOT is on or?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
Yeah, yeah, I'm Councilmember John Rissa, Director of Transportation. And maybe this is going to be a joint effort on the answer. But the the backlog is actually a snapshot in time. So the the great opportunity that we have with the multiple funding sources that allow us to do a the big pavement program over eight years. It's not showing up in here until those years come in. So you're not seeing, you're not seeing the 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 real terrific opportunity that we have to improve on that. So it's just a matter of the timing of report and not capturing an entire program.
Okay, so I assume if 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 we did bring into the fold all the great work you all are doing as it relates to measure T, this 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 dollar amount eight seventy one would be probably.
Yeah, as we as we put that money into place, yeah, then it then it changes. So it's it's not capturing all of those funds that we have out forecasted.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you so much. The the other question.
Councilmember, this is Jim, Jim, Jim Chan, the Budget Director, just to put a point on that. The ongoing amount is because of measure T that's going down. So if you were to look at the backlog re report, we report on this on every every year. If you go back a few years ago, I think for the seventeen eighteen re report, that ongoing amount was forty six point four million. So certainly, the additional funding that is available is bringing down, you know, trying to chip away at that backlog.
Right, and I know that's a stubborn number, right? Trying to make it go away completely is going to be challenging, obviously.
Right. I want to add just one thing is that the the full backlog actually dropped from by about five million dollars from eighteen nineteen nineteen twenty. So it does did come down slightly and 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 they'll probably be reporting on it fairly soon, so.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you. The other question I had is I wonder if someone from the library is on. I know, obviously, this report touches on many, many things the city does. And and if they're not on, that's fine, I'll take the question offline. But is there anyone from the library on?
I'm on, Councilmember Jill Warren.
Hey, Jill, I was looking for you earlier. I didn't see you, so I apologize. You you know, the the pa- page one oh one. Where it talks about library circulation.
Yes.
I I guess what stood out to me is that there's certain areas. So, for example, Edenville is one of them, Alum Rock, Albiso, Seven Trees, Beblosica Latino Mericana, for example. They all have low circulation rates. And I can only, you know, my 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 mind just goes in different places as to why that is. But but I guess there's maybe one or two questions I had. One is, what does circulation tell us? Like if circulation is low in a particular area, obviously, that seems to me in the very plain sense, circulation is just the number of items that move in and out of the library, right? Things that are checked out, a book or whatever it may be. And so what it, what does it tell us?
Yeah, I really appreciate that question. The circulation rates really are about materials that are circulated, but that are checked out, as you said. But a library plays a role in a community that is much more than just the materials. So, you know, it's also important to look at program attendance, things like in what we call in-house use, which is in some locations, while there might not be as many items checked out. There are actually high numbers of items that are used within the building when we're able to be open and left in the building for variety of reasons. And so you'll see that in each neighborhood, there's different types of use of a a building. And it's important to kind of look at them in balance. For instance, like a lot of times, a neighborhood that where the library is has a really high use by children after school. You might see less circulation of materials, but there's really high in-house use and really high program attendance. And are you, again, and also population of a neighborhood is important and the ability to access the building itself.
And is there a way to, this, I don't want to, maybe disaggregates, not the right word. But try to figure out if there's a strong correlation between, say, you know, again, I'll just say Edenville, because it's in my district. Edenville and maybe the lack of the 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 relatively lack or lackluster circulation and pairing that with the the number of programs and and sort of in-house use. If that goes hand in hand with higher in-house use paired with lower circulation, is that, do you guys have that somewhere?
We do, and I I really appreciate the interest at that level, because that's what we look at. And I think that that's, it's one of the challenges of the need and I, the discussion that was had earlier initiated by Councilmember Mahan and Davis. The 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 challenge we've had over years of being able to have performance metrics that are nimble enough to change with the changing usage that we see in communities. That, you know, circulation is not the be all and all metric for every neighborhood. But we do track other types of metrics and could definitely share that information with you.
Okay, and I know, obviously, in the in the the pages that sort of lead up to that little section, obviously, have a lot of other information as well. But that just stood out to me. And then and just one other very simple question that that say, for example, so we have eBooks that we can check out, right? If I go on the library website, I can download a book or I'm trying to recall, it's been a while, to be honest with you. Are we able to do that?
We'll be happy, yeah, Councilmember, we'll be happy to work with you to make sure that your library card is up to date and that you can check out eBooks. But yes, we have a number of eBook distributors that that our patrons can access.
So does that, if I download a book or however it's done, does that count as a as a number as it relates to circulation?
It does, and so that number, as you can imagine, has increased tremendously during COVID, when our physical collections were less accessible.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you so much, appreciate it. And those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm too wrong, library, like, I'll I'll put more questions on the library chart. Although, since we're talking about circulation related to e-circulation. When someone checks out something electronic, does it count against a specific branch or does it count just system wide?
You think you for that question, I believe it's a system wide checkout. So, well, I I can correct that if it's not accurate, but I believe we count that as a system wide.
For somebody who happens to live in a circulation area for a library, might use a lot of electronic books, but we don't know that. You wouldn't necessarily know from this data that that's happening from that branch.
Correct, although I do think that we we may have the ability to cross-reference data around the patron account and the zip code that's associated with that patron account to understand where the circulation is coming from. But it, but you're right, that it wouldn't be connected to a specific branch, because it's really around, you know, we see more and more this idea of like the the internet branch of the library, that it's really a system wide service that people can access in their homes.
And obviously.
Or from school.
I'm on page one oh one, back to that graph, you know, since since Councilmember Jimenez asked the question. I had actually noticed when I looked at this data before, that that Santa Teresa's library visitors, which is that that map on the top was a was a lighter color, but their circulation was one of the highest. And so you can actually do like a, an interesting correlation with to, you know, what's the average, potentially what the average visitor is doing in the branch. You know, fewer visitors, but more circulation. And then some branches like Pelly, which have lower circulation, but higher visitors, which means they're doing other things in the library and not necessarily checking out as many books. So this is kind of how you can answer some of the questions he was asking about other uses of the library besides just checking out volumes and doing circulation.
Yeah, and that's absolutely true. We see that it is really, it's very interesting to us as librarians, that the character of each neighborhood and the types of usage you see. And sometimes, you know, if there's more technology need and then there's more in-house use, because folks are actually coming into the building to utilize computers. Whereas in some neighborhoods, there's more pickup and people are able to utilize their materials at home. So absolutely happy to provide, you know, a branch by branch analysis of that.
Yeah, great. And so so now, back to the the discussion on the resident survey. And I'm always very skeptical about non statistically significant surveys. So, you know, I think Councilmember Peralis was kind of alluding to this in his questions about the numbers of people doing the survey in different formats. You know, but just because we increase the number of survey respondents electronically, doesn't necessarily mean we're getting this a good statistical survey. So, you know, having a target performance measure of having a certain number of residents who answer the survey isn't necessarily where we want to go. I think that our performance measure should be a certain statistical significance of respondents from various demographics in the city. Making sure we have different communities represented, different neighborhoods represented, different people from various communities represented in the survey in a statistically significant way. I think that would be very helpful to us. So figuring out how to achieve that, to me, it should be the ultimate goal when we improve the survey. And I I think you you said that you're working with survey companies who do some manipulation of the numbers in order to try to better understand how significant the numbers are, that was you saying before.
Correct, so the couple of things, so there is a random portion where they mail out four thousand to random households. And that's where the five hundred and eighty somewhat came from. And so the in expanding the survey, if possible, it is, there's a cost question from our office, because we don't have a tremendous budget. Expanding that portion to build up that statistically significant piece would be really part of it. And then getting the the online portion, which, you know, they they use different survey techniques to kind of try to mitigate some of the response bias by trying to mirror the random sample. So that so that they, you know, those folks who attend council meetings or or what have you, aren't overly drawing, pulling the data one way or another. That being said, the better method is just to reach a more representative sample to begin with. And so I think, again, as we keep thinking through how we do this, expanding the 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 random portion, I think, is also a part of it, too, to get that, you know, more statistically significant, that that part that doesn't need as much manipulation is is part of what we need to think about.
But even as you get people to do the online survey, you know, know about where they're coming from and what kinds of respondent they are, right? So we can still, you can still determine some statistical significance of their response.
Yeah, so that that's what they, that's what they try to do. That's what the survey consultants try to do.
And then do we, what is the, on those percentages, do we have the a breakdown of the difference between the results for this for the mail out version versus the online version?
I'm going to ask Stephanie to answer that. She's dug into that data a bit more than me.
No, so we get the survey altogether, the blended data.
But I was curious, because we, you know, people who fill out a survey online are often self-selected, so that.
Yeah.
And we don't know for sure if this is true, but maybe a higher percentage of dissatisfied people are going online to fill out a survey or. I mean, I'm curious, and and, you know, about whether we would be able to tell anything about the survey. Something about the trends in the survey based on where they're, what kind of respondent they are.
That is a good question. And so one thing we've, you know, in talking with the survey consultant, they they, you know, what you exactly, we said, the online surveys are generally going to be more negative than some of the other forms. So what they try to do is they 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 look at the different response of between the 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 mail in portion, the random one, and then the online. And then, like I said, they they try to use some what they call calibration technique to to reduce the difference between the two. And so then they try to, they make a subjective determination, whether it's whether they can blend it in such a way that the data won't be overly, you know, skewed. That being said, as I said, the better better option is to a wider population to begin with, get a broader reach with a with a random portion of it. And then see where we are.
I would also just add that we had started the opt-in portion a few years ago. And part of the idea for the opt-in portion was to help expand our reach, because the same problems with having an older, wider, more home owning respondent was true when we were doing just the mailed statistical survey. We're, of course, learning on, we've been working on our outreach in order to get to more people within the community. And of course, now looking back, figuring out how we want to move forward with the proportion of mailings that go out.
What was the year that the that the online was added to the survey?
I think that was in twenty sixteen.
Okay, so that's the year that corresponded to the big drop in the satisfaction numbers, right?
There was a drop. There had been some drops in the previous years as well, but that is where it really started to stay steady. On the other hand, we also had a lot more respondents, which could help reduce the variability that you would see year to year.
Oh, so then there might have been some inflation for that sudden drop and then the most steady result back. But but what we can say from it though is that the trends we're seeing now are useful, but maybe not the absolute percentage of things.
I I would. I would say they need to be, as like what I said earlier, they're they're one piece, they're they're one data point to look in the context of the broader broader report and broader measure. So do they, again, do they make sense relative to what you what you're seeing in police response? If police responses, and I don't mean to pick on the police department, if responses are are rounding our target or there's or becoming slower and you see a decline in in some of the measures around police services, does that make sense? You know, I try to point out, and again, I don't mean to pick on on PRS. But we saw a decline this past year in some of the ratings around use of community centers. Well, it it makes sense, we surveyed them in August and September, they've been closed since March. Do they make sense in that in that broad context? So that's that, I think that's the best way to think about it.
You know, that's what I'm saying, I think the trends can be useful to us. I just, I just also hesitate to have residents spreading out, sending out or spreading numbers that say, you know, some absolute percentage number and 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 start to live with like a thirty percent or a point, an absolute percentage might be less meaningful than the trends we're seeing, which I think are clearly telling us something about real real experiences. which I think are clearly telling us something about real experiences residents are having. But no doubt, that the performance measures in this report are very useful to us. And there's a lot of data in here that's really important. And I thank you for all the work that put this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. And Joe, thank you for your team for a very detailed report. I really appreciate the opportunity to sit down with you last week and ask a few of my questions. And then also to listen to my council colleagues today ask you additional questions. But, and I'd like to just follow up with them, a few of them. And since you've been talking about this actual survey itself, I'll start there. Do you have a breakdown by district of how many residents responded to the survey? I think that would be really telling. In our districts, we know, generated by the phone calls we're receiving, what areas of satisfaction are. So we almost don't need a survey because we're getting that survey every day, live time, by people calling us and saying, trash is a problem, police aren't responding quickly enough. And whether, and again, not to pick on the police, you just, when you read next door, that's what they're constantly saying is package theft is up and all of these details are up, not necessarily true. But that is what the community is feeling, and that's what generates the survey, survey results. So I'm wondering if you have those statistics by district, and I'd be interested how close I could predict to District Nine's response to some of those questions that you ask. Additionally, the timing of the survey is interesting in relation to COVID. I understand the survey was conducted in October. We had been in COVID for several months. People were starting to get a little more grumpy, a little more frustrated. Services weren't occurring. They kind of forgave the city for a while for lack of some city services. But after a few months, they started to get really grumpy. And we could tell that by the phone calls that were generated to us. So it will be interesting when we have the survey next year, October, what kind of survey results you will get. So I agree with expanding the survey and maybe targeting questions for youth, for seniors, for different marginalized communities, so we can understand exactly what their issues are and our concerns, and thereby determine what services we need to provide in targeted areas. Also, just as Councilmember Peralis was talking about the surveys and how many more we should get out, 10,000 sounds like a good goal. I'm just going to throw that out, too. And, but I think we can help you. And one way we might be able to help you is through the use of technology. And I'll give a shout out to IT, who was rated highly by the residents on satisfaction. So congratulations to Rob and your team for having, being highly rated. But maybe there is a tool that we can utilize at our office hours, at our town hall meetings, that people could go on some sort of app and take the survey at that time with a series of questions. So you're getting some real-time responses from people while they're in our meetings. That gives us an opportunity to ask them questions and kind of some value added to our office hours or our town hall meetings, whatever we're doing to reach the community, but also could give you some results. So that's just one thing. And I know that we did push out the survey, the opportunity to take the survey. But our newsletters, they're all pretty long because we're trying to cover a lot of information. So by the time they're getting to your survey, we may be asking them for survey information, too, for our own edification. So maybe we could work together on when you're putting that out and so that we're not jumping on top of two different surveys. So I really want to say, this report, this is my third year, my second year, I guess, seeing it. And it's very detailed. I find it very informative. All of the operations of the city are detailed and the relationship of customer satisfaction, but also how the staff is doing and how the community is doing. So I really appreciate that. So, so thank you. I do have a couple of questions for Jill about the library. And I noticed that, my, a couple of questions. One, we all are collecting books that we've been reading furiously. It's not that easy for me to donate books anymore to the library. Is there a simple way for me to donate my books that I'm not reading to you?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. You know, as you know, since the COVID closure, we ceased collecting donated materials. But that is something that we get asked frequently. And since we are now thankfully in a position to start considering increasing services, that's something that we'll consider whether or not we can manage donated materials. Part of it has to do with the ability of our friends at the library groups to be able to, you know, meet on our sites and manage the materials, because they usually do that for us. And so we have been working with them to try to figure out what the next step is. So we'll get back to your office as soon as possible because that is something we get requested quite often during this period, and it's something we're hoping to resume soon.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I, like Councilmember Peral, or Jimenez, I noticed some libraries have better circulation than others. Will we be using, given that we have a budget crisis that we're going to continue to face, will we be using this information to inform budget decisions on libraries and possibly reducing hours at certain underserved libraries? Like I'm looking at my two libraries, Cambrian and Pearl. Cambrian has a high circulation rate and Pearl does not. So is it possible that one of those two, and of course, they service completely different areas of the district, that one might have hours reduced based on a budget issue? Will you be taking a look at that? Or will it be across-the-board reduction if it comes through to that? I don't want to panic any listeners, but that, the libraries always seem to be something that we take a look at. And I, a proponent for keeping the libraries open as much as we can. Well, they're not really technically open, but, you know, we are, people are able to come by and pick up books. So will that inform us in a budget decision?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think that, again, the, what the library looks at in terms of usage is, while circulation is certainly one metric, we look at several different types of usage. So program attendance, visitors to the library, use of our public computers, and look at that as a whole in terms of what does each branch's usage look like? And what need does it fill in the community? I do think that if library hours are up for consideration because of budget reductions, we are going to be looking at, you know, several factors, including that the conversation around equity and what role the library plays in a specific community. And we'll definitely look forward to having those conversations with you if we need to at the time.
I appreciate that. And Dave, it looked like you wanted to weigh in a little bit.
Yeah, I thank you. And I think, I think Jill covered it well. You know, I will note, and the council knows this, that, you know, we have established some reduction targets within the departments. But that is a process to generate proposals that we take through a process to really evaluate. And obviously, we want to do everything we can to minimize impacts to the community as we consider budget reductions. And Jill is absolutely right. Equity is a big part of that, that process that we'll be using. And we will be fully engaging the council in that discussion.
When it comes. Okay, very good. Then I do have a series of questions for Chief Tyndall. Chief, are you still around?
I am, Councilmember.
Okay. One in particular relates to 911. I noticed last year we had concerns about needing more 911 dispatchers. Where are we in hiring more dispatchers and decreasing our response time?
So I do have the specific numbers as far as the hiring. I do know that we have been hiring, been putting on, number one, a very active recruiting campaign to not only hire, but diversify our hiring when it comes to the dispatchers up there. I'm being told that the numbers are, as far as numbers that are putting in from employees are good, and we're getting more that are going through the academy. So that is steadily climbing, which is great news for our dispatchers. I know you know that they work a lot of overtime, and a lot of that is mandatory overtime, so that is increasing up. When we look at, obviously, response time, and we look at the average of emergency calls, you know, this year, we were around for priority ones around six seconds. Our target is 6.5. So a lot of that deals with the initial call from when it comes in. And really, what we're looking for is when the initial call comes in, how quickly it gets queued and how quickly it gets dispatched out when we do that. So priority ones are in line where we would like them to be. And the majority of the 911 calls that we're seeing coming in, about 88% of those are being answered within 10 seconds. The goal in that is 90, so we're close. But again, we can always do better. And a lot of that really just is getting our dispatchers there, our call takers there to answer those calls and get it out as quickly as we can.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And in the survey results, 92% of the residents said that the city should focus on keeping, increasing a feeling of safety with the community. And this is something we hear all the time, whether it's my bike was stolen out of my garage or package theft or real serious, I mean, violent crimes, we hear that all the time. So I noticed in some of the statistics that there's, we have a clearance of homicide rates of 71% versus this, the state and national, we're way above that, which is awesome. So congratulations. With regards to violent crimes, though, we're low. Our statistic is 35% versus state and national is 46%. So what efforts are being implemented to improve clearance of violent crimes? What's like the number one, two things that you could do to increase solving violent crimes?
Great. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So a couple of different things. When we look at the crime that's coming in, the reported crime, you know, the numbers that we look at, there are 57,000 cases are coming into our Bureau of Investigations. We have roughly 130 personnel that work in our Bureau of Investigations down from about, you know, when, I would say, go back to when we had about 1,300 officers. We had a little over 200 in the Bureau of Investigations, so that gives you perspective, downsizing about 70 when it comes to that. This, last year, we had about 4,500 fewer cases, but we are, we are assigning more cases. There was a lot of cases that were going by the wayside, either for a lack of investigative resources. We assigned 32,000 cases last year when we look at it. And again, when you look at those numbers as compared to the amount of staff that is up there, that is an incredible number. One thing that the clearance rates do not take into account is the, sometimes lag in investigations themselves. So I'll give you an example of that. A crime is cleared when there's an actual arrest that is made on it. So if there's a warrant out for an arrest, that is not taken into consideration as a clearance. So if a warrant is put out on somebody, it's not cleared until that person's actually in custody. And then we always look at, you know, a case, sometimes take a while, it takes a while to investigate. So one that happens this year may not be cleared until next year. You know, as with anything, we know that we would like to get our clearance rates up. It's something that we constantly look at. Our Bureau of Investigations are constantly looking at ways to improve. A lot of that comes with the data collection that they do. We do have, I would say, a very robust collection agency, especially with crime analysis, that we now have a lot more staffing in there that allows us to focus on not only the crimes themselves and look for links between crimes that are occurring, but people that are doing it. So I expect to see those numbers to actually go up, to be honest with you, based on a lot of things that we are seeing and trending. Technology is certainly the key to that, but I will say so are the investigators that are up there, working their butts off.
Okay, very good. So a larger police force would help in part, too, but we may not be able to get there yet. All right, I appreciate your answers to that. Thank you very much. And that really concludes my questions. I have a lot of others, but I can probably reach out to the, to you individually if I have any that haven't been answered yet or that I need further clarification on. But again, thank you, Joe, and your team for your report and for all of the staff that were involved in putting this together and for the residents in participating in the, in the survey. So I look forward to the next one next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions? Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make my piece pretty quick, because some of the questions that I had have already been asked. And one of the things that, but I do want to say this about some of this, what has already been discussed. And that is, I want to appreciate, I want to thank, I can't remember who the first person was that talked about the surveys and who we are, whose opinion are we elevating when we limit the survey to a certain type of resident who's going to respond online? And I think that, you know, this is an item that I think from my first year, I had an issue with, as you know. I want to make sure that our hard-to-reach populations are integrated into our responses and are part of what the look and feel of San Jose. And I believe that a lot of the folks who probably responded to our survey are those folks who guide our complaint-based issues that we hear so much about. And so, you know, they're savvy enough to know the resources, they're savvy enough to respond to the surveys. And so, and they're still not happy about, about the quality of services being rendered to them. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I just wanted to underline that because I know it's something that I had discussed previously. So I'm going to move into the economic development, the workforce development. This is on page 66. And in it, it has, for 2019 to 20, the San Jose Works provided 900 youth with subsidized and unsubsidized employment opportunities. This is under the work, the paragraph starts out with the Work to Future Foundation. And then in the next slide, it has youth between the ages of 14 to 24. Job seekers were 252, placing jobs, 76% of that 252. We exceeded the state goal there. My question is this, did those job seekers, those youth job seekers come from the Work to Future in which, program in which we have businesses who take in a lot of our youth during summer month? And in exchange, they have a bit of a opportunity to be part or to be exposed to high-tech job employment. Is this, most of these, are most of these youth coming from that subsidized program? Or where are they coming from?
So I can take a stab at it. If someone from OED can, can help out with kind of the specifics, but the numbers in the Work to Future Development Program results. So those are the folks that are receiving the funds to the state. And they're receiving, as we strapped there, you know, they, you know, recruitment, layup version businesses and for those business clients, the skill upgrades and training programs. And then they report those figures to the state, and that's where the state goals are built in those agreements. And I believe this SJ, San Jose Works is a different job initiative. So I don't know if those are the same cohort. And I don't know if Nancy or someone from OED can help clarify that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I could probably have a little.
It does have San Jose Works. It ends with San Jose Works provided 900 youth. So if somebody could answer that question, that would be great.
Just to be clear, Councilmember Arenas, the distinction between San Jose Works and Work to Future? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm clear about that.
What I'm trying to figure out is the youth on the next slide that has, that outlines the program results. So the program results are the the program results. So the program results are that 252 job seekers were interested or, or applied. And 76% of those actually were placed in a, in a job. And so I'm wondering, where are we getting the best results from? Which of those programs are rendering this 76% job placement? So is that from San Jose Works? I mean, is this, I, I, I don't know. I don't know where it's from.
So those, and those are from the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Joe.
So my understanding, those are through, you know, the, the regular programs that Work to Future Foundation provides through its grants from the state, it'd come down to the federal government. And it's separate from San Jose Works, which is another program that they're running, running. So there's, there are two different cohorts, my understanding. In terms of which one is, is working better, I think, I, I don't know if I have a good answer to that. I don't know. Like I said, I think if someone from OED can, is here, could speak to that or.
Yeah. If OED is not on, I can just offer.
I think Chris Burton is on there.
Clarify. Okay.
Chris Burton is trying to talk here.
I would defer to you on majority of these questions, just to say that do you believe there's a representative, separate cohorts, but we can certainly
Yes.
build information
Yeah.
programs as far as any thoughts on efficacy and where we're getting the biggest bang for our buck? I can have Jeff follow up directly.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, just a very different set of clients. Obviously, Work to Future displaced adults, very different set of needs. The San Jose Works program, we're already working with youth coming primarily through our high schools. And that funding is not from the federal source. It's all local or fundraised. And so I think you probably needed two different sets of metrics to try to determine outcomes there.
So with that, Mayor, then it seems like, I, I understood that, that this was only you and I'm only referring to the, to the youth piece, although this could be also for Work to Future. But I was only referring to the youth. And so I was wondering, how are we placing these youth? Are they the same youth that participated in the San Jose Works program?
I think we probably need Jeff Russ or somebody to be able to let us Jeff with us by chance or?
I don't believe he is, Mayor, but we can
Okay.
directly on this.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Great. And, and here's my, I'll get to the point I'm, I'm, I was hoping to, well, I, when I was hoping to learn about what, what kind of results we're producing with our San Jose Works program. And one of the, one of the issues that I, that I've picked up from this particular program, and I had not that, of course, not the summer, the summer last, I had two youth in my office. I didn't get to really interact with them very, just very lightly, as you all know that that's our, our off time. And for me, it was, you know, it was no skin off, you know, there was just no investment on our end to further their interest for these, for the, the youth. If we're exposing them to opportunities in our local government, in our tech companies and whatever field it is, but there are obviously some, some companies that they normally wouldn't have access to or we, or would land an internship in. If we're doing this for our, 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 our youth, then what is it that we're following up with to say, and you can get there? Not like, you can have a job here for six weeks because the city of San Jose pays for it. But you can actually have a path towards walking through the doors after you finish such and such. Or where's the investment on the business or the company's end to say, this is what we're investing to make sure our youth have additional paths to come back in case this really sparks some interest on their end. And, and I don't necessarily see that. This is something I've brought up and grew NSC, but it's something that I wanted to, we haven't had an opportunity to really bring it back to, to council. And so this is one of the areas that, that for me, I want to make sure we have the, the result, when we have programs that build upon each other and don't leave our youth on this cliff, on the edge of a cliff, like, wow, this is, they're really impressed about working at such and such company. How can I get there when, you know, maybe their grades haven't led them, wouldn't lead them back to, to, to opening those doors at such company? And so I think the level of frustration or the level of disappointment for our youth to introduce them to, to, to these wonderful companies that we have in our own backyard, but they are not going to be part of that. And I, and I think we need to find some programs that scaffold success for our students in a way that don't discourage them and instead builds upon where they're at. And, and I know that we have other programming and I, I've got to say that I know Jill has been working on making sure that, that some of our programming involves our youth, provides, you know, $5,000 towards some of the college expenses. But you know, this is, this is for some of, but we're talking about two different sets of youth, right? They might not be the same. And so I want us to figure out, how do our programs interrelate with each other? How do we build and, and inspire a path for our youth that they can actually see that they can get there? I don't know that we're there yet. And so I really wanted to kind of take that, that piece apart. I'll, I'll wait for some, some feedback.
Yeah. Could I also suggest that perhaps Candace on our team, the mayor's office could also respond? Council member, I think, be helpful maybe for us to be able to describe other supports that are being provided from job readiness to financial literacy, to what was the College Promise, now Aspires Program, to try to help folks along the way. But ultimately, it really is very much on the employer as well. We want to try and encourage employers to have real relationships. So that's, you know, that's partly on us as the employers.
Yeah. And, and let me, and let me just say, Mayor, that I think the, the programming that, that we have, absolutely wonderful. I don't, you know, there's, there's nothing that I could say, you know, that we're doing wrong or that we shouldn't be doing for our youth. Absolutely. I just think that we need to tie in some of the programs with the experiences that we're offering our youth. How, how can you get there after having the six-week exposure to this high-tech company? How can we get you on that same path? And I think, you know, the, the opportunity ends with the, the six-week job, job internship. And, and so I, I wanted to have a more of a nexus between our own internal programs to set our youth up and the investment that we're making in them so that they could, so that they could have long-term success. So I don't want to, you know, this is not to discredit any of the programming. I am staunch supporter of all of those programs and absolutely appreciate them and will continue to support them. I just want to see the relationship between the resources that we have and the results that we're providing for our youth.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
And say is that San Jose Works is obviously a high school program, so that's focused exclusively on students within high schools across the city. And then the work, the broader Work to Future program and the youth that are characterized in those statistics is obviously a much broader subset, so from 14 to 24. But there is definitely cross-pollination between the programs. So as those high school students that are receiving that exposure from SJ Works, sort of moving through high school and completing their, their high school journey. And we do encourage them to the extent that it's available to then connect with those other Work to Future programs so that we can help place them. And then I do know, you know, we're often working with our employers to look for those opportunities so we can ensure that that experience is a rewarding one. There have been a couple of really great anecdotes where folks coming through the SJ Works programs as a summer program have actually taken on full-time jobs at employers throughout the city, especially with some of our manufacturers.
Manufacturers, yeah. Well, I, I'd love to see, not only with just the manufacturers, I don't know if it's in a trades type of a position, but I want us to make sure that our youth have an opportunity to have high-quality jobs and not, not an alternative trades path. But I'll leave it at that and, and, and follow up with, with you all a bit later on that. The other piece that I wanted to know in terms of economic development is post-COVID for the unemployment rate. I don't know if we can break it down by gender. Is that possible?
So that's a great question. So we looked at that. The, the data, the, the BLS data that we have doesn't break it down by gender. You know, we did find some information at the national level showing that the, the impacts were greater among women than men. I don't have the specifics in, right in front of me. But the initial drop in the, or the, the rise unemployment rate did affect women more than men at the national level between looking at, you know, February and April. I don't have the specific numbers, I apologize. And then it did kind of even out toward the end of the year. But the initial impact at the national level definitely affected women more than men. At the local rate, we, at the local level, we've been looking for that, but we just don't have that data yet. I don't know if there's a if, if Chris Isabel is aware of anything.
We're certainly looking more into how we can break down unemployment data to understand more accurately the picture that's painted across the city. Our focus over the last few months has been to sort of break down unemployment by area of the city or zip code. I don't believe we have information by gender at this point, but it's certainly something we can look into more and come back to on that issue.
Okay. It, it would be wonderful. And as we head into, hopefully sometime soon or we're heading and certainly preparing for recovery, that we know what we're dealing with. And I know research shows that women are always impacted, especially during pandemics. And, and it, for whatever reason, you know, we are always defaulted with childcare. And, you know, there's also
I did dig up the numbers really quick. So overall, so overall in, at the national level, February 2020, this is our information from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The, the overall unemployment rate was three and a half percent, 3.5% overall. And for men, it was 3.5 and it was slightly lower per woman, 3.4. But in April, the unemployment rate among women, women jumped to 16.1% compared to 13.6% for men. So it did have a disproportionate impact nationally.
Yeah. And I would say that because women get paid less, they're probably the ones who have to quit a job and, and and provide some of that childcare because all of our children are at home now, right? So I, I want us to make sure that we keep in mind these kinds of patterns, especially gender-based patterns as we formulate strategies. I don't but I, I know that, that we all, and it's not exclusive to CD, it's exclusive to all of our departments to think about how are our women getting impacted by COVID differently than men? And how are we going to have some strategies that target women so that we can elevate them or get them back into the workforce if that's something that they want? How do we support those folks who are being impacted the most? And this is based just on gender, of course. But overall, so I'm gonna let that one go, but I, I do want to have, so I'll follow up soon enough around that. This, the second thing I wanted to see if in our police, this is in our, in the police, page 116, 116 to, oh, I don't know what the pages are, but as I was looking through, one, I just want to thank our, our police department for the work that they're doing. I know it's a very difficult time and want to be targeted during civil unrest and during pandemic. It's just, it's been a lot. And, and some of these, some of these experiences allow us to grow in different ways. And so I'm wondering, how, how are we, what are we learning and what impacts, what, how is our the, how is our, our hiring being impacted post civil unrest of last year?
Before you respond to that question, I just want to do a time check. We're almost at 6 o'clock and I know we've got a full agenda. So I'd like to take a dinner break here for a half hour at least to be able to give everyone a chance to take a break. Councilor Rans, can you give us a sense about where you might be likely to break? And we can
This is, this is my last area. I, I had other areas. I think people covered them already. I'm not going to go over them again.
Okay.
So this is my last area to cover.
Okay.
So I
Okay.
I don't know if I can do it in three minutes, but I certainly hope we can, we can wrap this up pretty quick.
Okay. So the question was posed. I'd like to respond.
Certainly. Thank you for the question. Thank you for the comments, Councilmember Rans. So in regards to the, the staffing portion of it and the recruitment, I will say that certainly we've been hampered with recruitment, certainly with the pandemic, our recruiters have not been able to go and travel far and wide like they did. So certainly from that standpoint, I think we are a little labored as far as what our recruiting efforts are. As it stands right now, I mean, we do another academy class coming up. The numbers are in line with where we have been in previous years. We certainly know, and we talked to our recruits, and we have had some recruits drop out of the program based on either peer perception or from, you know, what they're seeing with the civil unrest and deciding that's, this is not the job for them. And some of them have even come to, you know, come and got an FTO and decided it's not the job for them. So we've certainly seen that portion of it. Academy-wise, you know, we went because of the pandemic, we had to slow down our academy classes. We had overlapping classes, we stopped that. And I just went down to two academies a year. We're now back to three with a little bit of overlap, just from the great work they're doing out there. So I would say we are impacted a little, but we're, we're working through it. And a lot of the things that we're doing is, you know, more online-based versus face-to-face.
Okay. Um. All right. The, the, the next thing I just wanted to ask was, I know this is all, all of the police responses were very helpful to, to see where we fall in line on a national level or even just a local level to see what, how we how, how we are responding. One of the things that I'd like to, for us to break down is in the, I think it was a major violent or violent crimes. I, I would like to see us have, I know that we have rapes in, in here. And this is, I know that we, we typically have better statistics around rape because we, we are reporting this information on a federal, to the federal government. But this is not comprehensive. It doesn't show all the sexual assaults. So you don't necessarily have to be raped to, to be a victim of sexual assaults. And so I'd like to, in, in future reports, have a more comprehensive number around sexual assaults and rape is just one indication of that. Is that something what we could do for the upcoming year?
And Councilmember, if I can just comment on that and thank you for the question on it. So in regards to the auditor reports, you know, that'll be up to, I think, Mr. Rio stood, described on that. But as you know, we have an upcoming meetings both with PISFIS in upcoming weeks and also with the full council. We have the report coming up, which details in upcoming weeks and also with the full council, we have the report coming up, which details sexual assault specifically and the breakdowns as far as the cases, numbers and all the stats when it comes to that. You should be seeing that in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you, Chief. And actually, that's a lot of advocacy on behalf of Councilmember Carrasco and myself, who've sat in PISFIS and and asked for those numbers to come up and to, and we keep track of them. But I'd like for the report to also have a better picture of sexual assaults and not exclusive to to rape. So is that something that, Joe, that you could?
Yeah, we can, we can look at it. It's, we can talk with the police department next year as we kind of go through it and figure out how best to include that information.
Great. And it just doesn't provide us with the the bigger picture. It provides us with a picture around rapes, but it doesn't provide us with a picture around sexual assaults. Those were my questions, those were my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just, I'll offer just a couple of quick observations, because I know time is very scarce. First, I just wanted to say, in addition to all the work, of course, we have ahead, I think there's a lot of good news in this report. And I want to commend everybody for pulling together in a very tough time, this pandemic. Give you a couple indicators. I know if you go to the spreadsheets on page forty five on the, where the dashboard is, we've seen our our street pavement index improve four years in a row. I know that's long been a sore spot for the city. And we're seeing real improvement. We look on the facing page, on page forty four, the percent of information technology project successes by schedule costs, scope and value, again, another real chronic pain point. It's now eighty six percent. I think that is a huge improvement and I'm grateful to see those kinds of numbers. And then, you know, one department that doesn't get a lot of positive notice, just by the nature of the work, it's just, you know, often in not in in the in the front office, so to speak, and there's the city attorney's office, look at litigation collections over the last couple of years. They actually greatly exceed the amount of liability payments. That means, yes, our attorneys are actually earning money for our taxpayers in a really positive way. And obviously, they're not responsible for liability either, but they're, they're working hard to minimize it. So anyway, there's a lot of good work being done and I want to recognize and thank everybody in the city team. On with the regard to the the portions relating to financial condition, Joe, I'd love to have a conversation offline with you to do a deep dive. The specific concerns I had, if you look at pages twenty eight and twenty nine and year to year comparisons and graphs are being used when in the middle of those years, there are changes, we're including OPEC, we're including pension debt that we didn't include before. And so as a result, you get a slope on a line that doesn't reflect what's happening. It reflects the fact that we've, we're no longer comparing apples to apples. And and I I think also in the city comparisons, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, those pages. I think there's a lot of question I know that your team has, because occasionally I would see sentences in there saying, well, it kind of depends what services the city is actually counting and providing and so forth. Where if, where a more meaningful comparison might be, if we were to actually take apples to apples services and say, let's compare our libraries, police and and parks, you know, whatever it might be. Because as you know, you know, LA, I think, has the largest public works or the, I'm sorry, LA Power and Water. I think it's the largest utility in the country, if not mistaken. These numbers can get so distorted based on the varieties within the city. So I'm hoping we could just have an offline conversation about having those apples to apples comparisons so that the data we get from this is stuff that we can, is is really meaningful to us. Great, thank you. All right, unless there are any other questions, I think we need a motion to accept the report. On the motion, let's vote. Yes.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Yes.
Raines?
Yes.
Uli?
Aye.
Mayhan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Director Prowlus?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to check in now with Dave and and interim chief Tindall. At this point, I was inclined to take a break here, but I know because I'm guessing we're gonna have a significant discussion on the questions through a prospective chief. Does that, does that work okay for you guys?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, we can, we can take the break now.
Okay.
I do have an update for the council, and that can either do that now or wait till we get back.
Why don't we come back? I think there are going to be questions when you make that announcement. So we'll come back at six forty five. Hopefully gives everybody a chance to to take a break and we'll resume then. Thank you, everyone.